All right. My papers. There you go. Are we ready? Okay, let's call this meeting to order here. So Sharon did mention that she's at a parent teacher conference, so she'll be joining us as soon as she can. So she did call me. May I have a motion to approve and accept the agenda without amendment?
Motion.
Second.
Collins or questions on the agenda? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Posed? All right, motion passes. Pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our session. Thank you, Ms.
Jim.
Do we even start yet?
Go right ahead.
All right. Well, thank you for giving us time tonight to walk you through the state of student learning in Ankeny, based on a number of assessments and some data that we've been looking at actually quite some time, as well as share with you some of the ways we're responding currently in time, as well as what we have planned down the road. So I shared with you on Friday an outline of our time together. But generally speaking, we're going to go through data sets, beginning with the elementary. We're going to look at some data from our elementary program. Amy Bitman will be sharing. There's some work from the field. Laura Ryan's joined us tonight. She's the principal of Northeast. And talk a little bit about how they're responding to their building as one example. Then we're going to move into the secondary program, similar format. Belle Keon, Director of Secondary, will share some of the data from our secondary program. We have Jeff Schumacher here tonight, who is going to share a story from part view on how they're responding. And then we're going to move into the data around some of our special programs. So in each of the three areas, we've broken the data out in subgroups. So you're going to get to see data and lots and lots and lots of different views. So I apologize ahead of time if it feels like you're drinking from a fire hydrant. You are. We've done our best to try to keep it digestible in this time we're together. But of course, we're always willing to spend time with you one-on-one, come back. We'll send you the data sets, whatever you might need. Okay? So that's our plan. We have built in some time for question and answers after each part. So if you want to take notes, we're going to distribute some of the data sets each, each time we go into that part of the program. Feel free to take notes and ask any questions that come to mind. The purpose of our time together is really to share that current state of student learning and then also share the ways we're responding, schedules, structures, instruction, all kinds of different ways. I want to share with you, first of all, a huge thank you. Thank you for dedicating the time for this conversation, for putting this data front and center. It reflects how our students are doing. As I was thinking about this time with you, I did a little research and I came across really some research. And this comes from the California School Board Association, who pulled findings together and identified five ways that school boards can really help in making data a core component of the work of the district. So I want you to take just a minute, and I hope you guys can see on the screen in front of you there, to look with me at those five areas. The board can support in a number of ways. One, making data use a priority, making it central to how we look at how we're doing. Investing in data systems. Data Hub, for example, would fall right into that. And all of the data you're going to see tonight is coming through Data Hub. We look at Data Hub hourly, certainly daily. We've been looking, as you've looked at data this year on staff's coming through Data Hub. We're looking at student achievement, enrollment, overall learning sections. All of that's being monitored throughout the year. Okay? Allocating resources towards support staff and other human and financial resources for data use. We have certainly allocated for that. Providing money and time to improve our staff's capacity to use data effectively. And I think that's just an ongoing part of our work. And then last, fostering a culture of using data for continuous improvement, a way to go about getting better every single day. Not just compliance. Okay, compliance isn't good enough. I wanted to share with you, and I hit this a little bit in the board report. We have an internal process of data analysis that is ongoing. Principals can talk with you about that. But as a part of our regular review of data, there are individual teachers who look at this data on a daily basis. Grade level and course alike, PLCs, professional learning communities, look at this data periodically, almost weekly in some cases. Building leadership teams, look at this data. Groups of grade alike administrators saw a kid, the last two weeks, our principals have been coming together looking at data sets. Similar to, a little different than what you're seeing. Our secondary folks have come together and looked at data. So that type of look. Our academic services team, gosh, we've been looking at data every week for a couple of months now. It's just a part of what we do. And then certainly, our cabinet spends some time on data as well. The importance of Data Hub in housing all of that data, pulling it in from the number of our systems, right? Putting it in a way that we can view it, make sense of it, look at it from different cuts, subgroups, et cetera. And then last, and strongly, many of us do, that it's important when you look at data, that you use some type of protocol. And there are hundreds, if not thousands, out there. If you've been a part of SIUP, you've been a part of using a protocol to look at data. One that we've seen recently, and I'll just give you a quick view of this here. Really centers around, oops, it's going to make me run in, never mind. Let's get that, we can show it to you later if you want. Essentially, you start by just looking at the data and describing what you see, seeing it at face value. And then looking at it for, what types of questions are they making me ask? What might I start to infer from what I'm seeing? What might I celebrate? What's in here that's worthy of celebration? What are pieces of this data that cause me to want to go deeper, to look at other data sets? And then certainly, what are the implications for action? What might we do as a result of what we see in the data? Okay? And there are some data analysis reminders that I can't enter into a conversation about data and not remind myself, as well as all of us. And really, I know the Pope is probably joining us tonight as well. If data, looking at data isn't a part of what you do regularly, if it's a first-time experience, or it's just something you do infrequently, these reminders, I think, are really, really important. Especially when we're a system looking at data of nearly 12,000 students, right? We have to look at what the data tells us about the big picture in our roles, right? We're here at the district level. We know that the most, those smaller grade levels are being looked at on individual students by teachers, by PLCs, by buildings, right? Then that's the hard one. That is to suspend our assumptions. Because often, we've created stories in our heads about what we should see, what we might see, what we want to see, what we don't want to see, right? And so, looking at data, it's really important to suspend those so that you can get as much as possible an objective view of that data. Otherwise, we can get into trouble with something called confirmation bias. Basically, confirming what you believe to be true because you had your mind set there already. We want to avoid that. It's also important to remember right? We're looking at data that's American nature. There's all kinds of data sets that can accompany a quantitative data set and really flesh out a more descriptive picture. The last several weeks, we've been walking classrooms, looking at what we see, observing what's happening, what are we seeing, right? Having conversations. You do that at home with your children, right? So sometimes those quantitative and qualitative pictures match, sometimes they don't. And when they don't, in particular, probably when they do as well, again, asking questions becomes really important. And the last one is jumping to conclusions. I think that's especially important for those of us who are looking at this at the broadest level possible. There's a book out there by Daniel Kahneman that is called Thinking, Fast and Slow. You know, you're shaking your head, you've seen that book before. And I think this quote is, just sums it up. "Jumping to conclusions is efficient if the conclusion is likely to be correct and the cost of an occasional mistake acceptable. And if the jump saves time and effort. However, jumping to conclusions is risky when the situation is unfamiliar, the stakes are high, there's no time to collect further information." I think that's just a good reminder as we jump into these data sets. With that, I am going to turn it over to Amy Bitman. We want to share some information from our elementary program.
Dr. Lindemann, how would you like questions to come kind of after each section? Is that good?
So we're handing out here a packet of the elementary data that I'm going to be discussing with you. So each of you should get one of those. Here's kind of the way that we set this up. And Erin, I'm glad to ask that question. We're going to go over some data sets that pertain to kindergarten through fifth grade in two content areas, literacy and math. Okay? The assessment data that we're going to share with you is through our FAST screening assessment. FAST stands for Formative Assessment System for Teachers. It's a screener that we so we're going to look at those data sets. And then, as Jen mentioned, Laura Ryan is here from Northeast. It's going to tell you a little bit more about some work that's happening in our schools. So as I go through this data, if you could just jot down the questions that come to mind or things that you're wondering as you hear that. And then after Laura speaks, I'll certainly entertain any questions I can have. And I also recognize that this data is, you're seeing it for the first time. So I'm going to give you a little bit of time through each slide, just to take a look at it and review it before we dig into it, okay? So first, as I said, this is our screening assessment that you're going to see for kindergarten through fifth grade. And there's two. And I kind of want to just give you this information up of you that aren't familiar with screeners. It's not an achievement test, okay? So it's not like your typical standardized test that we take like the Iowa assessments. A screener really kind of has two purposes. One is to tell you the health of your core instruction. Is our guaranteed curriculum working for at least 80% of our kids? And then the other reason that we would screen kids is it's a predictor. It tells us if kids are going to need more. So all of these screeners that we give are about a one-minute assessment. And so we can tell after just a few minutes. It's supposed to predict that a child's going to need intervention right away and gives teachers that information to respond. So those are the two reasons why we give this assessment. We choose here in Ankeny to give literacy and math. The state requires us to give the literacy assessment to all kids. We also administer the math as well. So that means that I'm going to kind of give you an overview of how you're going to look at this data. So you'll see a table there for every grade level, kindergarten through 12th grade, and then also special programs when Nancy comes up here. We start with kind of a question. What question is the data that you're seeing right there in front of you answer? What do we want to know? So for this first piece of data, this is focused on literacy. Again, like I said, the FAST bridge assessment. And there's two assessments that you see here in that second column. Our kindergartners and first graders, we pulled early reading. And what early reading does, it's an essential reading skills that are developmental for that grade level for students. So such as letter ID, letter sound, onset sound, segmenting, blending, phoneme awareness, phonics, fluency, things like that. So that's what that test is assessing. And CBMR is a curriculum-based measurement for reading. And what that assessment is, it's a fluency assessment and it measures the number of words read correctly. So for our second through fifth graders, they read three stories. They have a minute for each story. And it's computer and so it counts the number of words read correctly in that one minute. So just to give you some background on those two assessments. So this, the first data set that you see here, the question that we wanted to know, especially given the year that we just had, or are currently having in March, is how are our students performing at this point in the year compared to years prior? Okay? So we took the winter benchmark screening score over the last three years to see what's the comparable. How are our kids doing at this point in the year? You can see the results there. Our target is 80%. So if 80% of the kids are meeting the benchmark, that tells us that students, that our core is working. Our core instruction that we do for all kids is going to be successful. Again, if a student's not meeting the benchmark, then we know we're going to have to give them more instruction. Okay? So I'm going to just pause there for a minute, let you look at that data, look at some of those trends. And then I'll share a couple of things that I'm going to bring to your attention with that. So I think one of the things that pops out at me when I, when I look at this data set, that yes, our scores, number of kids meeting benchmark aren't where they are historically, where we would like them to be. And we see a range of about 5% to about 18% drop from this time last year. But what I would say, fourth grade is an area that they're meeting that 80% benchmark. And then also our fifth graders are close to that. And our kindergartners are close to that benchmark as well, 79%.
Erin, can I just ask a very simple question? Just, when were these given in the winter?
The screening window was from January 4th to February 26th, so it just closed on Friday. So the students could have taken the test anywhere in that window.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the next data set we're looking at is still in the area of literacy. Still with those same two assessments that we are required to give, or that we choose. The state lets you pick your default assessment, but those are the ones that we picked here in Ankeny. And again, the question that we are wondering is how are our students compared to local, the metro area, and then also state? And as you can see in that data set, we have more students meeting the benchmark as compared to Heartland AEA. And also as compared to the state of Iowa. And then I think, as you can see, one of the trends there, an area of concern for us, first grade. And that is also an area that's shared by Heartland and state as being the area of need. For the next one here, we want to look at how many students are meeting benchmark and are we increasing from fall to spring? So as, let me back up there. As students enter our classrooms in the fall, and we give them that first screener to see where they're at, we hope that they will grow under our instruction from, as they move throughout the school year from fall to spring. So as you can see, the change there in each of those grade levels. Second through fifth grade increased, or third through fifth grade. Sorry. Yeah. Um. So second went up, went up from fall to winter. Second to third, yes, sorry, second through fifth, all of them, those grade levels in the CBMR increased from fall to winter. Our kindergarten and first grade, we did see a decrease of the number of students meeting benchmark from fall to winter. With again, you know, kindergarten's still close to 80% target, fourth grade's on that target, as well as fifth grade's close to that target. It's not too unusual to see a dip from, for kindergarten and first grade from fall to winter because it is a different set of subtests that make up that score. So for example, our first graders, in the fall, they might just read a sentence. It's called sentence reading. And in the winter, they're actually introduced to passages or into fluency. So in kindergarten and first grade, the test grows with them as readers. It's more developmental because we're rigorous. So to have a bit of a dip there is not too unusual, although we still want to, our goal is still to hit that 80% benchmark.
And when was it given in the fall?
It's a couple of weeks into the school year, I don't know the dates off the top of my head, but September, October. No. All right, the next data set is, again, one of the things that we were wondering in this unique school year was how are onsite students, how many are never meeting the benchmark compared to students that are learning remotely, meeting the benchmark? And so we wanted to pull that data to see if, you know, what kind of story does that tell us? Again, same K through five, early reading and CBMR were the data sets that we pulled. And you can see there a percentage of students who met the benchmarks. Just to kind of give you a number, in the first semester of school, we had about 710 kindergarten through fifth graders in a remote setting. And here in the second semester, we have about 620 in that remote setting. Approximately 100 less in the second semester. So these results could, you know, given that we give this test and that semester was changing, these results could be a reflection of the first semester. But there's more students meeting the benchmark kindergarten first and fourth grade, they're reading that benchmark as compared to the remote learners. Our remote fifth grade is meeting that 80% threshold that we want to see, our kindergarten on sites meeting that first, that 80% threshold that we're looking for, as well as the fourth graders. So now I'm going to shift gears a little bit to math. Again, as I stated in the beginning, math is not required by the state of Iowa. We do choose to give these assessments here. Obviously, it's just one data point to tell us how, you know, what those foundational skills the kids have, as well as how the health of our core is working. We did not administer the math at the beginning of the school year. So we aren't able to look at the increase from fall to winter this year. But we have given it over those three data points. So we do have winter results in the last three years that you see there. So just to kind of give you some, again, some of these assessments. The data that we pulled was early math in kindergarten and first grade. Again, it measures those early foundational math skills, such as number ID, match quantity, place value, decomposing, some of those early, early skills. And then second through fifth, the data that you see here is AMATH, which is actually a computer adaptive assessment. So when a child answers the question, if they get it right, it takes you to a little bit more challenging question. If you get it wrong, it takes you to an easier question to kind of see, they can gauge where their math skills are. And it's really a wide range between numbers sense and application of math skills in that AMATH test. So again, 80% is our target. We're meeting that target in kindergarten and first grade. And we're real close in second and third. But still, our trend is down from this time last year. Again, we don't have that comparable data from the fall. I jumped to onsite and remote, how are our students doing comparatively? Again, you can see there, a lot of the grade level, whether it's onsite or remote, are hitting that 80% threshold or are real close to meeting those targets. And the last data sets I want to share with you today are, if you recall, I came to you guys last, I think it was last June, and shared kind of the state of the state of the elementary at that time. And the things you had asked was how are our students performing in their subgroups, or subgroups of students? And so wanted to bring that data back to you today so you can see those results. So what percentage of students met the benchmark by subgroup? This one you see is male and female. So on this chart, you see both literacy and math for just this winter screening window, and also compared to the total population. So some similarities between, not too much of a gap between female population.
Are there benchmarks that you want to see? Like, are you seeing what you want to see between male and female? Like, just not too far off, that's kind of
Yeah, so I mean, if there was a big discrepancy between males and females, I mean, I don't know that I have an exact percentage.
What's that big?
Yeah, I would say 10%, 12% higher. Yeah. And then a big gap between a subgroup and a total population, again, big, how do you define big? Higher the number, I guess, is more of a concern. And then finally, just what percentage of students met the benchmark by, when it comes to race and ethnicity? If there wasn't, if the number of students in that subgroup was less than 10, it's noted there on the chart, so we didn't work for that percentage. But as you can see here, with literacy and math, our Asian, multiracial, and white students, a larger percentage of them are meeting the benchmark as compared to our black or Hispanic and Latino students in both literacy and math. in both literacy and math. Well, Fabian said, I know that's a lot of data in a short amount of time, but I would like to have Laura Ryan come up. And as you guys know, she's the president of Northeast Elementary. And she's going to give you a more anecdotal story about how this all looks in the schools and how they're responding to this data.
Thank you. Hi. I'm genuinely excited to be here because we are working feverishly in our schools. And I'm glad to be able to present what it is that we're doing at Northeast. But I also want to tell you that what we're doing at Northeast is not that much different than what all of the other elementary schools are doing too. So I'm going to specifically speak to Northeast, but just know that that encompasses all of our schools. So before I start, I guess I'm controlling. So do you guys have this graph up in front of you too? Okay. So it's important to explain to you what the MTSS system of supports is in our schools. That's something that is not new. I'll talk through that process, and then I'll explain as we get towards the end, what is different this year compared to other years? What we're doing to, to close that achievement gap. So there's four steps to the MTSS process. Step one, as Amy described in detail, is the screener. The screener is where we look at which, identifies which students do we need to look closer at, which students are not making benchmark or meeting benchmark, and who we need to have conversations around. At Northeast Elementary, we have three formal data review meetings a year. One in the fall, one in the winter that we just wrapped up, and then again at the spring. In the winter, what, and who comes together is our grade level teams, our PLCs, and then all of our critical partners. That would be our targeted reading teacher, our special education features, myself, our instructional coach. We come together, we look at our data, we look at trends, we ask ourselves questions. Is, what does this tell us about our core instruction? Do we need to make changes and shifts in what we're doing as a, as a core? What does this tell us about individual students? What does this tell us about our programming? We have lots of conversations when we look at our data. Specific to this winter data that we just looked at, we're looking at our growth trajectory by individual students. And I'll show you an example here in a second of where you can see them. And we're always asking ourselves the question, are we closing the gap? And if not, what do we need to do to close the gap? The second piece of that MTSS process is a diagnostic. So the screener just tells us who to look at. We need to go deeper and identify what assessment do we need to give our students now who fell out in the screener to tell us exactly where to start. So an example of a diagnostic assessment might be, Dr. Dimmer talked about the CBMR assessment. That's a fluency assessment. If a student is not reading fluently, it doesn't tell you what to do. It measures how many words per minute are they reading and what is their accuracy? So we need to know more about that. Are they not reading at an appropriate or a grade level fluency rate because they don't comprehend it? Are they not reading because they have phonics gaps? Are they not reading in the elementaries because they are struggling with sight words? There's lots of reasons why a student may be struggling and not be proficient on that CBMR. So that diagnostic assessment is going to help us determine where to start and what the progression of skills is and exactly where our entry is going to be for that student. The third step in that process is our targeted interventions. So this is the question that we have been talking about the most. What is the most efficient way, what is the intervention we need to run for that particular student? And then what is the most efficient way to provide that intervention to our, to our students? So we have twenty-seven kids in a classroom. As you can from our data, there are, there are students that we are needing to serve this year that we didn't serve last year. So how are we going to give that targeted, specific instruction that they need? And so I've identified here three different, two really, and then the third is both. Way number one is a structure called WEN. It stands for what I need. So we look specifically at students and what they need. And then we, we create flexible grouping within our students. So for example, in our first grade classrooms, we have five teachers. So it doesn't make sense for every one of those five teachers to be running a sight word intervention every day and for every one of those five teachers to be doing a segmenting and blending intervention. So we come together, we look at our student data, we group students into flexible groups based on their intervention need, and then we create this structure called WEN. It's at that time where we flood that grade with additional building support. And the teachers provide the intervention to the students. But then we have additional support outside of that. Right now, it's all hands on deck. It might be me, it might be our instructional coach. It is our targeted reading teacher supporting our WEN structure. So our associates are giving our students additional practice. So that is our WEN structure. It's a flexible grouping where we're putting kids in interventions and then we're providing it in an efficient way. The second big thing that we're doing as a result of our data is we've gone back and we've looked at core instruction. What do we need to add? So at Northeast Elementary, we're concerned with our first grade data and our second grade data. So we've really changed our instruction at all grades. But we have added an intentional fifteen to twenty minutes of an instructional routine that we implemented in the classroom every day. So if the majority of the students need that support, it makes sense to implement that whole group. Going back to that question of efficiency, how are we going to provide? And so adjusting our core instruction, structural routines is, we're getting a lot of success with that and we're encouraged by what our data is telling us now. And then the third thing is both. And the student, I'm going to show you in a second, and you can see that we do both of those things. We are providing a WEN structure to support that student's needs, and they're also the whole core adjusted instruction. And then the fourth piece of this, so we've given the screener, we know who to look at. We've given a diagnostic, we know what their needs are. We've planned the intervention. We know what the intervention is we're going to run and how we're going to do it. The fourth piece is we need to monitor our progress. We can't wait until spring and look and see if that worked or not. We have to look at it on a regular basis. So we set our students up in progress monitoring through the FAST system. And so there's two important things with that. The first one is, does the progress monitoring tool we use match the intervention? That's critical. And the second piece is, at Northeast Elementary, the first week of every month, that same data team comes back together. Our grade level PLC, all the critical partners, we come back together and we look at individual student graphs. And we look to see, are we closing the gap and are we making gains? And so this next document is a specific student. So I can talk you through what all of that looks like that I just described. So this is a student, if you look at, this is a second grade student. And if you look at the top left, that is their CBM scores for this, for the fall and the winter. And then the student's most recent progress monitoring data. The middle little paragraph there is benchmark scores. That tells you what we would expect a second grade student to perform, both in words per minute and accuracy of words read correctly. And then that bottom little paragraph there, I'll talk to you about that in a second, but that really is answering the question, are we closing the gap? So now if you look at the graph second, look at the data line, that dotted data line on the bottom. That dotted line is the day zero trend line. So the first data point, it doesn't give you a number, but it's six. This particular student read six words per minute when we assessed him in the fall. Six words per minute at sixty-seven percent accuracy on his second grade level passage. So what this really told us was that the second grade level passage was too hard for him. This was a student that, this was a challenge for him. But if you look at that dotted trend line at the bottom, that shows you what the FAST system would say would be an appropriate year's growth for that student. Well, clearly, that's not an appropriate year's growth because the black line across the top is year and spring benchmark. So we need to get that student from six words a minute to a hundred words, a hundred and one words per minute. So in the fall, this student read six words per minute, sixty-seven percent accuracy. We wanted the student to be reading fifty-six words per minute, eighty percent accuracy. This student was fifty points off a benchmark. So then, in the winter, we gave these assessments at the end of January, so about a month ago. When we gave it to him again, after everything I just talked about, this particular student is seeing our targeted reading teacher for support, is getting a matched intervention through our WEN structure. So similar same intervention twenty minutes a day. We've reallocated our supports to flood this grade, and he's getting that second matched intervention. And we've adjusted our core instruction in the classroom. So because of those things, you can see the student is now starting to grow. If you look at his winter score, he scored forty-eight words per minute, eighty-seven percent accuracy. Benchmark was eighty-four words per minute, eighty percent accuracy. So in the winter, he's thirty-six points off a benchmark. That's a gain of fourteen points. So then look at the student, and you can say we're closing the achievement gap for the student. And he's at the accuracy goal of eighty percent. So if you follow that lineup, on June fourteenth, he looks like he's going to meet the global benchmark of a hundred and one words per minute. So this tells us that everything that we're currently doing is working and the process in looking at our students on a regular basis is effective. So this student fell into that number that we looked up here as not meeting benchmark. But you can see that there's a lot of success happening with all of the students that are in the buildings. So what adjustments are we making? And how is that different from what we do in a normal year? So one of the major adjustments we're making is we're having daily conversations around accelerated learning. And this process started back in April. We started looking at, what are our students, what were they not going to get from spring break on? We created a document, and we had vertical teams where classroom teachers could talk to the teachers in the grade above. We had conversations back in April about what are our students going to miss and how are we going to make up around? And one of the key things that we do is we look at prerequisite skills. So for example, our third, fourth, and fifth grade math unit, the last part of the school year is fractions. So our students didn't, most of our students depending on the building, did not receive fraction instruction. So as we go into the fraction unit as a fifth grader, the fifth grade teachers need to know what are the prerequisite skills that they need to have in order to be able to do this grade level work. And so we're rewriting our units, and it's a spiral. We're going back and recapping those skills that they didn't get last year, and we're giving those, that instruction to them as we start a new unit this year. We're also, as I spoke earlier, we're adjusting our core instruction specifically in literacy, but we're doing it in math too. What are they lacking? How can I change my core instruction with the most efficient that I can do it? How am I going to get the biggest bang for my buck in this fifteen and twenty minutes, fifteen and twenty minutes? And it's the consistency of every single day. Now, we have some students in classrooms who don't need that. We do, we have some higher kids that that's not beneficial for them. So in those situations, we have enrichment projects going on for those students specifically for that time. And then our WEN structure, which I spoke about that, that's flexible grouping, I won't go into detail. Aligned interventions, it's more critical this year than ever before that what the classroom teacher is doing and what their critical partners and the support staff are doing, all is aligned. It would be hard for our students to go from my classroom teacher who's giving me an intervention and go to my targeted reading teacher who's doing something a little bit different, and I'm going someplace else and it's different. They're not aligned, we don't see the growth. To be intentional about those, how they build on each other and how they reinforce the other intervention is important. And then the last two things is, we are allocating our building resources to respond to our data. So in our grade, it's in our school, Northeast, it's our first and second graders that we're concerned about. So I do a second grade intervention every day. My instructional coach does a first grade intervention every day. Our school administrative manager does an intervention every day. It's really all hands on deck, and we're all flooding these grades, supporting them in the way that we can. And then finally, we all feel a heightened sense of urgency. We always feel a heightened sense of urgency. When we look at our data, we always feel urgency. But this year, more than any other year, we have an intense urgency to make sure that what we're doing is intentional and targeted and purposeful. Okay? Thank you.
Excellent, all right. Questions for Amy or Laura, I suppose, but let's start with Amy.
I don't have a question, I have a request. Could we get historical data from the breakdown between male and female and race and ethnicity?
Yes.
I understand.
Yep. We can.
Jim, I think you had it up?
Yeah, I have lots to say. I mean, there's some great things I heard. Thank you, Laura, for sharing your story. And I assume, like she said, that these stories are a little varied from building to building, and yet probably very much the same because there's probably just different places where you are more urgency. I appreciate the idea of putting more time in core instruction because there are a larger number of kids. I was anticipating you might tell me that, and I know we're not supposed to do that, right, Jim? But I was guessing, and so maybe that's when. The question about the WEN, it's called, let's see, when I, and you're doing the, while the adults come and they all are doing specific things about what the kids need. So you got some kids that don't really need any of that. So during that time, are they doing some stuff with the associates? Is that what I understood correctly?
I would say it probably depends on the school and the classroom. Lot of application, so independent reading time in their, you know, level text or enrichment activities.
So is it correct to say that next fifteen and twenty minutes a day, every day of the week, in those grade levels where you're most concerned? So obviously, you didn't extend the day, so what do they be placing or what gets missed?
Yeah, it's just back to that whole concept of restructuring the core. So whether it's, you know, all of them had an intervention block put into their day. They might have restructured another doing a win as opposed to the teacher just doing their own interventions. So that wouldn't be borrowing time from anywhere else. Thirty minutes of independent reading time, it might have been reduced on a, you know, twenty minutes or fifteen minutes. Or you're integrating socializing science, and you're taking some time from when you would do direct teaching in socialized science. So trying to get creative with that.
Oh, I understand, I totally understand that. And I'm thinking, reading and math are going to be, if you can do those, obviously. So I'm glad you're putting the time into those core areas. When I think about, the kids are doing, and you look at the data, how have we communicated to parents about how their kids are doing? It's not only what, how they're doing, but help them understand it because you understand it, but to a public might not totally understand what a score means, what kind of communications happening from classroom teacher to parents about what they could do for their child.
Yeah, so a couple of things. One is both of our parent-teacher conferences falls on the heels of the screening window. So that gives us an opportunity to have face-to-face conversations with parents about the results from this, this data point. We also send home a letter to all parents to let them know how they were doing in reading. And this is just one data point. So I think there's other conversations and other means of communication between parents and teachers about how students' performance is throughout the semester, just waiting till the screening window.
Can you know, just assure us like how we're doing as a school system? K five, and I'll ask later for secondary, but K five, are we doing any systemic PE across the board as far as things that we're having to do to help with the reading and the math instruction this year? That maybe is a little different than you've done in the past, just due to our circumstances.
Yeah, so we, historically, in the last couple of years, we've had a focus on literacy for our PD. And so we were getting ready to shift to math because we have some, some work to do in creating a guaranteed Bible curriculum in math. And so we want to give some learning to our staff on that, which we're still going to do. But I think that sense of urgency is still there with literacy. So it's, you know, schools didn't adjust their Wednesday morning PE plans from here to the rest of the year, that, you know, if they didn't have a focus on literacy or math. But I think a lot of this learning and work is happening at the PLC level. As Laura mentioned, creating routines. So if they're doing some kind of a sight word or blending routine in their classroom, the whole group, they've written those with an PLC or, you know, with support of our targeted reading teachers. So you'll see some embedded in Wednesday mornings, but I think, I think a lot of it is just kind of that daily on the boots, on the ground type running with PLCs and, and the daily work.
One last question, and then I'll try to give it to my friends here. So when I think about, you know, reading support teachers, and how our most needy readers maybe, that might not necessarily have an IEP, but they might be pulled out. So you've got the WEN, you've got core instruction, and then they might get pulled out with a reading specialist. So I'm assuming the reading specialist, when they pull them, that might be wearing some small group instruction with other reading groups or something like that, and the reading block of time.
Yep, so any child that is in need of additional support through another person, another provider, such as a special ed or a literacy teacher or an interventionist, we guarantee them core instruction. So we never pull them out of whole group, we never pull them out of small group. We would take them out during their independent practice time in order to get them an extra instruction or during that intervention block that we have, you know, kind of protected for that extra instruction.
Appreciate that, thank you. That's so important because the kids that are getting hold, if they are missing any of that, then they're fragmented and feel disconnected. So I appreciate the effort to do that, so thank you.
I appreciate it.
Brian? She got one, go for it.
To kind of reiterate what Amy had asked for, um, these subgroup breakdowns, it would be very helpful to know what those breakdowns were pre-COVID versus this. And then probably integrated in with that is, is this breakdown and the plans to address those gaps built into what you're currently doing, what you've currently explained to us? Or are there additional interventions that are happening? Because these gaps are definitely much bigger than what the rest of the data, the totality of the data showed. So I would also agree that we'd love to see some of that dug a little deeper, at least to be able to bring back to us. And then it was really great seeing the graph of that individual student to see that, you know, this is where we were, this is where we are, this is where we're going collectively. That says, as a group, it's drilled out to kindergarten, first grade, second grade. How many of our students do we think by the end of the year, like this individual student, will be back at benchmark? I mean, that involves a little educated predicting, obviously, the way you predicted the student out. But do we see kind of that same trend line happening to where our grade levels will be back? At least at that, because we're so close to eighty percent on so many of them. You know, back to kind of historically, maybe where we were. Or at least, do you predict they will all be hitting that eighty percent mark by the end of the year?
That's a great question. We keep track of it by individual students and then we can also track it by groups. So if there's a group of four to six kids in an intervention on blending, we can look and see of that group, you know, monitor that group. But as far as district and or even building or grade level, I'd have to dig into a little bit. I don't know if we can predict out of those twenty to thirty percent, forty percent that aren't meeting benchmark, how close are we getting with that?
If they all kind of have it, and of course, not everyone will have a direct, nice straight line of, because everyone's an individual. But it would be interesting to see, especially as kind of roll, do we get that spring assessment in? If we can get some sort of follow-up that says, hey, we, we got where we felt we needed to be, where we should be, that kind of thing. It'd be a great follow-up.
Yep, absolutely.
Amy, I'm looking at time and knowing that we have two more data sets in time. I think if you can hold on the questions, we'll save them to the end. The rest of them, if that's all right, and move on to secondary, just so we can get it all, all at least out that.
Amy, Brian, you have a chance.
Sorry. I promise not to ask you.
I'm not sending an email.
All right, we are going to shift into secondary data for grades six through twelve. Grades six and seven also have FAST data. So the first few slides that you see, you're going to see some similar patterns and structure and setup as you did K five because the six, seven has that same FAST data. And then we're going to transition into grade distribution data, which is another student outcome data set. And we'll look at that in literacy and math. And we'll look at that by some different groups and some historical comparisons. And then we also do have some subgroup data to share with you. And then Jeff Schumacher will share some tidbits from PRC. So to look at the first data set there, we are looking at grades six and seven for FAST. We are looking at both reading and math. The target remains the same at eighty percent. In sixth and seventh grade, the assessment that they give is A reading. A reading is kind of a broad-based assessment that has vocabulary and comprehension skills. And then Amy had shared a little bit about the A math. So as you can see in this winter window, our students in sixth and seventh grade met the target for literacy and math. And that is similar to their performance in past years. The next data set is looking at, again, benchmark comparisons for students that are onsite and students that are remote. If you look at that data, you're seeing both our onsite and remote students who are meeting benchmark in literacy and in math.
Can you just look up, I don't know if you happen to know six and seventh, but like Amy had shared the number of remote learners?
In sixth and seventh grade, we have roughly two hundred and thirty remote learners.
Thank you.
For subgroup data for FAST in sixth and seventh grade, similar to elementary, we have a male, female comparison, both for literacy and for math. You'll notice that the math is more consistent. And there's a little variation there in the literacy with females, more females reaching the benchmark. And then looking at FAST for sixth and seventh grade, looking at that by race and ethnicity. As we look across those, you can see variance. Amy shared with you that some of those subgroups have fewer than ten students, which is designated. You can see that in literacy, student, we have more students meeting that benchmark. So we're closer to that benchmark across subgroups than we are in math. So we're going to shift to grade distribution data. At our upper grades, we don't have a full assessment that we can pull consistently across all those grade levels. So before we jump to this, I want to give you a little bit of context because you're going to see a similar layout for each of these different groups. So one item you're going to see on here is a P for PASS. That is for students that are on modified curriculum as their core curriculum. So this is my core literacy or this is my core math, but I'm on modified curriculum, so I don't receive a letter grade. But a PASS indicates that I'm meeting the expectations for the standards that have been modified for me. So that's a grade that represents core instruction for a subset of our population. Typically, those students are special education students. And then this data is broken up by grade bands. So you'll see there's sixth and seventh grade band, nine, and our ten, twelve students. The top half is looking at this current school year for the first semester. The bottom half is looking at what did it look like last year, first semester? And we're going to look at this both for literacy and for math. So one of the things that when you look at this, and you may have heard this in conversation, if we look at our kind of grade distribution, we do know that we have students, students that are failing and the percentage is there a little bit different than in past years. And you can see some difference as well in the D range. One of the things that I want to point out to you is when we look at meeting grade level expectations, we would think students that are receiving As, Bs, Cs, or a P are meeting grade level expectations. So for example, in sixth and seventh grade for this first semester, students meeting those expectation, ninety-six percent of our students were in that range. Last year, it was ninety-nine percent of our students. This year for eight, nine, ninety-two percent of our students were meeting those expectations across those grades distribution. And last year, it was ninety-seven percent. And then in grades ten, twelve, it's roughly eighty-seven percent this year. And last year in literacy, it was ninety-one percent. So these are looking at literacy scores for students across all the literacy cases that they would have taken this past fall. And we're going to shift and look at math in construct. So you're going to see some similar patterns here. We're seeing that difference in distribution for our Ds and our Fs. If we look in math, kind of across the grade level distributions, both this year and last, the percentage of students meeting those grade level expectations, students with an A, a B, a C, or a PASS, is a little bit lower in math than it was in literacy. So for example, this year in grades six and seven, we had ninety-two percent of our students in that range and last ninety-five. And eight, nine, eighty-nine percent this year, ninety-two percent last year. And at ten, twelve, eighty-six percent this year and ninety-one percent last year. We'll shift then to looking at literacy and looking at that distribution for students who are onsite learners and the distribution for students who are remote learners. The first thing that you're going to notice in this data is that our remote learners, we're seeing a higher rates or higher percentage in that D and F category for our remote learners, right, six through twelve, compared to our onsite learners. So if we look for onsite learners in grades six and seven, we're looking at ninety, ninety-seven percent of our onsite learners were meeting those expectations. Remote learners was eighty-nine percent. At eight, nine, it was ninety-three percent. And remote learners, eighty-three percent. And ten, twelve, eighty-nine percent for onsite learners, meeting those grade level expectations. And eighty percent of those marks for remote learners, meeting those grade level expectations. You're seeing that pattern for literacy. As we shift to math, you're going to see a similar pattern. The probably the difference here is we have a higher rates of failures in some of those areas. Kind of if you look specifically for math. And so I'll do that same process for you. So when we look at math, our onsite learners, and when we look at the percent of marks meeting those expectations, we were at ninety-four percent. And remote was at seventy-eight percent. For eight, nine, we're looking at ninety percent and remote at eighty-five percent. And then at ten, twelve, onsite at eighty-seven percent and remote at eighty-two percent. So when we look across this grade distribution thus far, there are some things that you're going to notice. That this year, our students meeting expectations, so students in that A, B, C, and PASS category, the range between literacy and math is roughly eighty-six to ninety-six percent of kids meeting those expectations, kind of the span there. Last year, it was ninety-one to ninety-nine percent, meeting those grade level expectations. There is a pattern as you look from six, seven, to eight, nine, to ten, twelve, both this year and in the past year. Whereas that grade level increases and that percentage of kids that are meeting those expectations declines a bit. Another pattern that you'll see there is that literacy tends to have slightly higher grade distribution pattern for those meeting expectation categories. And math has a slightly lower in comparison. And then you saw the difference between our onsite and our remote setting for grade distribution. Okay. If we look at distribution of grades across the board for first semester and we look at that by gender, you're going to see kind of a similar distribution there. When we look males compared to females across those meeting expectations, females, when you put that all together, at about ninety-three percent. And males are at ninety percent. And then the last slide for secondary data has that grade distribution for this first semester, broken out by race and ethnicity. So there's a lot of numbers on that slide. Probably when you look at grade distribution, you can see that the letter grade of B is most consistent across categories. And there's quite a bit of variability across the subgroups. All right, we'll transition here to Jeff Schumacher to share some stories from his experience of it. And then we'll come back with a question time related to some of this secondary data.
Good evening and thank you for, thank you to that and team for inviting me here tonight. Really, I think your questions are probably going to be more informative than just a presentation on my part. So I might just enter with a few tidbits, I think was the word used earlier tonight, a few tidbits for you. I think you would all agree that our teachers have invested a great deal of time and effort to make learning successful for kids. And you know, I see it from the teachers that I work with at Purview, teachers from other parts of our district. And it's just really impressive how they've put the whole of our district on their shoulders to carry kids and their families across very deep water. And I think our data, and I'm not going to edit it for you, you'll make your own interpretations. But I think by and large, our data is showing that we have lots of kids learning and they're learning in difficult circumstances, no matter what their mode of learning. And families having to navigate really difficult circumstances. So I think that begins and ends in the work that occurs in our classrooms and the work that our teachers do with kids, teachers, our social workers and our guidance counselors and all those people in our building that are there for kids. So, okay, now the tidbits. So there, there are some structures and routines that occur across classrooms that benefit kids without regard to the mo, the learning modality that we happen to be in. So I would probably start tonight just by sharing that when we work with a group of kids, it's really important that, and I think our staff are really clear about the learning targets that our kids are going to engage in today. And I can provide direct instruction that matches what we want kids to be able to achieve during class that day. And that they provide really good feedback to students in real time during that period. And that instructional cycle is really helpful for kids to, I think, find a greater level of success. And the thing I think we're doing more so across the district now at the secondary level is bringing to kids the sense of this is what success looks like. This is what meeting the standard looks like for this standard body of work that we're engaged in. And this is what it looks like when we're making progress. This is what it looks like when we're not quite at that level of making progress. And this is what it looks like it's exceeding. So showing those various levels of performance in normal times, and I think even more so now, really helps kids to be more responsible and take more responsibility for under being able to evaluate their own work and their own progress. And especially when we're offsite and they don't always have immediate feedback options from staff when we teach them how to use proficiency scales. That's been, you know, a really important, I think, aspect of the story around why many of our regular kids are successful. Let me move on and go on to, so we have protocols for our students onsite. that are here because we're in the COVID moment. So that raises some challenges for staff and we have to think about those in terms of how do we respond so that we can keep learning moving for kids. So we don't have kids in small groups for long periods of time because we want to keep that social distancing present. But we still find ways for staff to work with small groups of kids, smaller groups of kids for not quite as long a period of time. So we can go three to five minutes with a small group of kids who need some additional supports and then pull a second group in. Typically, we might engage kids in small groups for longer periods of time. But I mean, that's just a workaround that our staff have had to engage in. We, like in a normal routine, we would have students enter a classroom, engage in a bell ringer. When we see kids struggling, we know that it's most likely that they don't have the background knowledge or experience to be successful in the moment. All of a sudden, I got really nervous. I'm so sorry. Well, thank you for the encouragement. I'm just going to move on to different, just a couple of examples. So in the data, what we noticed is our kids in seventh grade and all kids in seventh grade in math are in pre-algebra, so that's part of the accelerated core. So I don't know if you caught this in the data because you can look at the math data that was represented here. And you can get, what did winter in sixth grade look like last year? And then go down and what does the winter look like seventh grade this year? Because that would be more or less a core word. And when you do that across both literacy and math and when you look at both years, you can see that math data that took the greatest dip. And so we unpacked that before winter break, we saw that dynamic coming. And what we found is a larger number of students were not finding success in those parts of the seventh grade pre-algebra math standards that most directly relate to eighth grade algebra. So seventh grade pre-algebra is kind of a survey class, right? So there's some, there are some algebraic concepts, there are some probability and statistics. And so, so we, and we've done this before, we just look at those standards that are most directly aligned to success in algebra. Then we looked at those kids that were struggling and both onsite and remote and developed a series of remedies for those kids. And we took each kid individually and looked at their circumstance, where their gaps were, whether they were remote or onsite. And so we have probably 65 or 70 students who are either coming in during a study hall, working one-on-one or two-on-one with a teacher, coming in before school, coming in after school. In the remote, they're logging in before school, they're logging in after school, they're logging in during their asynchronous time. And it's just that sense that we're really focused on the standard book that they need to make significant growth on before the end of the year so that we know when they get to algebra, they are ready for algebra. Now, in a given year, we would have maybe 20 to 24 students who just don't get to the finish line. And they have to come back into eighth grade and take pre-algebra again. And that's kind of been our dynamic. I think it's fairly similar with pre-age as well. But we're maybe four times that number right before winter break. So I mean, obviously that told us, I don't know, maybe we lost time during the hybrid period where we didn't have math every day. Maybe it was gas from sixth grade the year before when we were not in session. But we were all, we are and still are all hands on deck with our pre-algebra students and the remedies we have in place. And later this week and early the week after, we'll be doing an analysis of each one of those students with our math teachers to understand if we're making the kinds of progress we need to make. And if not, we'll be back for, for still looking at remedies. We really should recognize that, you know, the best learning occurs when teachers and students are together and when teachers are directly supporting students in small groups. So for example, in math, reading, we have many small groups around our four plus more math. And you've probably heard four plus more math, four plus more reading. So we would have a math specialist who worked with three to five students in six sections a day and then would usually meet with kids every other day. So that's 12 sections every, every two, every two days. And similar to the progress monitoring that you would see at the elementary, that progress monitoring exists with math. And we also have four plus more reading. And so that teacher would also work with kids who typically have not found success and we have success criteria. And we engage them in the four plus more reading. And we know that with two years of four plus more reading, 80% likelihood, they're going to be meeting benchmark or exceeding benchmark by the time they leave a seventh grade. So, so we feel really confident that we know which best benefit from that intervention, which means that they go into where to be successful in math and science and social studies, right? And in math, we're seeing about 45 to 50% effectiveness with kids who, and now we only have one year with that math data that we can release going into that next year without that intervention. This is our second year, so we'll see if we get that additional 40 to 50% so we can get up to 80, 90% of our kids going into Southview without needing additional math interventions. So I apologize, I don't know what happened, I got a little fumcracked here, but I appreciate your patience and thanks for the invitation and have a good night.
All right, we'll take a couple of quick questions, then we'll save some for the end, but I'll give Katie, Ryan, Amy if you have any first dibs and any questions immediately.
My questions are pretty general, so I think I-
You saved, okay. All right, anybody have any burning questions they want to ask now? All right, we'll save them.
Yes, and I might just kind of wrap up. When we talk about our six, 12, so Jeff spoke of interventionists. So at six, nine, we have interventionists in reading and math that are there providing that additional small group instruction, kind of they fall out on their assessment history. So we've got those pieces in place for our interventionists at 10, 12 as well. And then as he spoke to those PLCs, those content area PLCs are looking at their information, trying to respond accordingly in the instruction, what they're choosing to prioritize and prerequisite skills that they're working on. And then there are also kind of this added layer of supports that are being put in place based on specific data. Jeff spoke to what he saw in pre-algebra. And algebra and geometry, we're staying with math, looking at how to provide those supports. So kind of across the six, 12, looking at some of those structures, right? So with that, I'm going to transition to Nancy.
In case you guys hadn't have enough, here comes my banana. You're welcome. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to be here. And I want to just take a second to recap a couple of things that I heard in these last two groups that speak my language. And so I want to make sure that we emphasize those. One, special populations are nothing without a really strong core. And so I really appreciate the attempts and the actions taken to adjust our core because that really impacts all students. Two, I heard a lot of things about interventions and responses that were individualized. Which was special education director, but it's just things in my heart, right? It's all individualized, it's all about what each kiddo needs and we're responding that way. So I really appreciate the work that's happening, Laura and Jeff, at your buildings and all the buildings across the system for all of our students. Which would lead me to my prefacing statement before we dig into some of this is that it's really important, Matt, remember and look at special populations, that every identified student is a general education student first. So sometimes when you start to divide and you start to narrow down things, the data can look a lot different. It's really important to remember that they're general education students first. Their data is represented in the data that Amy and Bev already shared. We're just taking a little bit narrower look. We're narrowing down that total population, so keep that in mind. Also keep in mind that two of these subgroups that we're going to look at, special education and English language learners, all have targeted interventions because of either a deficit skill, a disability, a language acquisition piece. So they're all instruction type those that are separate and individualized. The other group we're going to look at is our SES group. And that's not as instructional driven as the special education and ELO. One more thing, is that I just, there's a lot, if we could narrow down, it gets pretty complex. Some of these students can be identified in all three areas. So they may be represented multiple times. Okay, so just keep in mind, it's really hard to tease out or infer things because there's so many complicating factors. But we'll do our best to dig in here, okay? So the first slide really that you're going to see, again, it's a similar format to where Amy and Bev started when they did the literacy. So we're looking at K5, K1 is early literacy, 2, 5 is looking at CVM. And then to the right, you have the three different subgroups, fall to winter. So you're looking at the percentage of students that were meeting benchmark from fall to winter in those different subgroups. What I'd like to highlight to you is in grades, if you pick in the special education column, grades two through five, you had more students in winter who met benchmark than you did in the fall. That trend would be similar in our English learners. Slightly different in our SES, it would be grades three through five. We may grow, increase the number of kids percentage meeting benchmark from fall to winter. One, one area of just makes the heart sing, if you look at English learners, fourth grade, significant jump from fall to winter. English language acquisition is starting to show its growth. There's a lot there, so I'm just going to give you a second to touch it. Moving to the next slide. It's really looking at the difference between remote and onsite. And I would be really brilliant and tell you that there's some sort of a trend, but I can tell you there's enough data to tell me there's not a trend. So just I'll let you look at the slide, it kind of bounces all over the place. But keep in mind, again, you're, you've gone from total population group to learning modality. So you've really narrowed that funnel. And so you're in some places looking at a very small percentage of students who are, that represent that category.
Can I ask a quick question? It's my, it's my understanding that some special populations might have been in school every day during hybrid or some like this English learner, so it doesn't look like there's any really statistically in remote learning. Can you maybe talk to that and help us understand maybe the nuances in this?
Yeah, I won't have individual numbers for you because it could become identifiable, but I can tell you that in the, in the fall, so I'm going to go just a little bird walk, so stick with me. In the fall, every student with an IEP was, we were required by the state to write what's called an I page. I think I talked to you guys about this before, we talked about what it looks like in those different modalities. There were some students who simply could not access their education from a remote setting. It just had enough of a significant disability that access became an issue. Not internet access, not feasibility access, physical access, mental access could not do that in that environment. So those students were offered the opportunity to come onsite, either in hybrid or everyday for some of those students. So you're talking about some significant discrepancies there.
Yeah. Thank you.
So just walk through an example with me on this slide. If I look at kindergarten, just to, to show 83% of the kindergarten students that needed special education services and attended onsite were meeting the benchmark. See how it just keeps narrowing it down and the funnel gets pretty tiny as opposed to 65% of students needing special education services and were being served remotely met that benchmark. And then, a lack of a distinct trend either way. Go ahead and move on to the next slide. This slide is really looking at literacy, continuing with literacy. You'll see in that first column that reads total population, that's very much the percentages that you saw from both Amy and Bev earlier, the percentage of the total population that was meeting benchmark in winter. Then I'd separate that out by both special education and low SES. So one of the things that you can see, like again, looking at kindergarten as an example, this will just be, these aren't numbers that are on this slide, but if you want to jot them in, you can. So 79% of the total population of kindergarten met benchmark in winter. 43% of special education, which equated to 61 students. 59% of English learners, which equated to 39 students. And 58% of SES, which equated to 168 students. So you're really getting into a microscopic look at populations.
Total population is about 1,000.
Of?
From kindergarten.
Yes, ish. I'm sure there's an exact, ish is good, yeah.
Put your paper back.
That's all I know how to do. So and also just a key thing in mind, I, I sometimes I think the percentages are a bit shocking when you look at that. But please know that you're talking about, especially in the first two columns, you have acquisition related issues, you have a language acquisition related issues there. That doesn't mean they can't learn, that means exposure, right? We have to get that exposure and that language acquisition. And special education, it's likely, or it could be likely, that you have a deficit area that we're working on. So there's other data sets that help us know, like their IEP and their progress monitoring, if they're hitting that trajectory, but they may not be hitting that benchmark at this very moment.
And Nancy, your question I asked when you started, but when it says special education, this would be a reading goal, a math goal, any type of goal?
It'd be any goal.
Okay.
I'm going to move on to the next, I know you're going to be data fatigued. So what I'm hoping is you don't have questions. That was my, oh, okay, just kidding. Next, next slide is really looking at math, it's the same as the previous. This would be something I would highlight, I actually thought was interesting in that special education column that eight through three, the 50% and hires, that's pretty exciting to me. That was a pretty steady, steady, well, they're a pretty steady data set in math. I felt the same for a low SES, really that was 8%, close to 60%, really a significant difference in math and literacy. Okay, now I get to shift gears to grade distribution. I gave the oldest person the most differentiated approach. So just stick with me, right? Here we go. We're looking at grade distribution here in special populations. And it's, it's much like this slide that Bev showed, except on the top, this is by subgroup. So this particular subgroup is special education, students with IEPs. On top graph is literacy and below it is math. And you'll look at the grade distribution across the spans. And I'll go ahead and do a little summary for you. At the top graph, literacy, students with IEPs. If you're looking at that A, B, C and past columns of meeting that grade level expectation, 90% of our students with IEPs met that grade level, grade level expectation in six, seven, 83 in eight, nine, and 77% in 10, 12. For math, the percentages were lower than literacy. 81% six, seven, 89, or I'm sorry, that would be the ninth grade, 77%. And 10 through 12 grade band, 75%. Going to walk you through a very similar graph for, graph for our English language learners. It's set up the exact same- It's set up the exact same way, literacy on the top, math on the bottom. Meeting grade level expectations for 6th and 7th grade, 90% of our students, English language learners. In the 9th grade was 71%. 10 through 12th grade, 53%. In math, 6th and 7th grade, 72%. 8th and 9th grade, 78%. And 10 through 12, 57%. So again, we're seeing that trend where math is running just a little bit lower than literacy at this point. And one more, do this for our low SES subgroup. 6, 7 band would have been 91% meeting grade level expectation for literacy. 8, 9, 77%. 10 through 12, 71%. Math, 6, 7 is 80%. 8, 9, 74%. And 10, 12, 72%. And I do have, even if you have questions about the numbers that we're talking about per grade level, I have some of that for you. I just didn't want to throw any more numbers in your direction unless you really are done with that moment. So I would entertain any questions that you might have regarding special populations.
I just have a, there wasn't any comparison to previous years, so can you just bottom line it? Just comparing it to previous years?
I think you'll see similar trends in special populations that you do in the general, yeah.
Okay.
It's very, very much a relationship.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Nancy? Otherwise, we'll open it up for, unless Dr. Lindman, you have anything else you need to?
Final, then we've got.
You guys are the best.
Thank you, thank you Nancy.
We're not going to throw any more data sets out here. I did warn you, it'd be like drinking from a fire. I didn't, it all, see, data sets like this internally, we would spend a day, if not longer, looking at this. So I appreciate your endurance and perseverance in this. I just wanted to share kind of a summary of the general implications. I hope you heard through the conversation or through the examples that our two councilors shared with you, but first of all, core instruction adjustments. So when we're not meeting that 80% threshold, so when we don't have 80% of our kids meeting benchmarks, that's an indicator to us that we need to look at our core. So looking at our core and saying, okay, how can we beef up in the core to get out of that? So you've heard some of that. That's been happening across the district, across grade levels. Next, lay on that intervention, time, support, and planning. What does that look like? You heard the elementary speak to the win time. Maybe making that more intentional. It's been built in just on an individual teacher or a grade level team, building that so that they can be more efficient. And we say efficient, not because we're trying to hurry or anything like that. Don't tie efficiency to any sort of saving money. It's all about time. Jim indicated this earlier. We only have so much time with students. And so we've got to find the most effective and efficient way to get in there and target those individual needs by grouping kids in small groups when we can. And then aligning students' instructional plan to those needs. Sometimes, I don't think Laura said it tonight, but our elementary team will refer to that to the instructional package for a student. Sometimes in my former world, I would say, what's the instructional match? Let's look at what the need the student has. Let's make sure our instruction matches that need. And the more people we have providing support around that student, everybody on the team has to know that match, and we have to make sure that match aligns. To begin, all be coming at it with our own perspectives or experiences. It's got to be the student right there in the middle. Next, you didn't hear much about this, but building in credit recovery strengths. But I think you can infer from the data sets around grades, particularly at our 9 through 12 level, when we need students to exit with graduation credits, right, that meet our graduation requirement, we've got to find ways to help students recover that credit. If you've known me for a while, it wouldn't surprise you to hear me say, we don't wait till summer to do that. We do as soon as we can. And so our high schools have been doing this long before this year, but getting as creative as they can to use time again during this semester to help students engage in that recovery. Let me give you an example. I think if you were to think traditionally, or maybe what you've heard is, kids hop on a platform like Edgenuity, take a class, earn a credit, that one. Yeah, that's okay. But the way that we've used in the last two or three years is, especially in those sequential courses, when the standards spiral from the start of the year through the end of the year. If the student fails that first semester, okay, keeping that student in the course second semester, but being very intentional about, as we go through second semester, how are we spiraling back? And gathering evidence as to whether that student is meeting those standards from first semester to last semester. It was true, we've done this in math courses. We can have that student exit that second semester showing evidence of meeting the standards for the entire year. No summer school course needed, no additional time outside the day on an online platform trying to earn credit. So getting, building those in across the system and then creating a robust summer term. So I thought this quote might be appropriate. There's a lot here, right? And we certainly can't change everything apart, right? We can't change anything. Everything we would make would be inappropriate if we don't look at what's happening and make our decisions based on what we see. So we've spent, I don't even know, hours and hours and hours. I'm so grateful for this team of people and the broader team of teachers and mentors across the district who are all in on figuring out how we help students continue to learn at higher levels and AEPs. Summer term is the last piece I just wanted to show. And this is just very high level draft, okay? Well, we've been meeting periodically to map out, how could we strengthen, add on to our summer experience for students? Make it more robust? I think Laura said earlier, why she was tracking on the progress monitoring, it said June 14th, he might be there. What if we had some literacy instruction? What grade was this, roll back? 2nd grade. For 2nd graders, that would allow that student to continue to make that progress in the summer. That's what we're planning. We're looking to offer a summer term that is not just for 9 through 12, like we've had for the most part over the last several years, where they come in and make up credit. That'll be a piece. But to have broader summer experience for targeted populations. It's not going to be an open invitation, hey, you want to do this? It's going to be, hey, we're seeing, there's great games being made here, and we want to keep you on track toward that and get you there before you roll into next school year. So we've looked at, you can see, different areas of need, literacy and math skill building. We're looking at defining what's the purpose for a time this summer? Who, how will we identify that population? And what does the intensity and duration look like? More of an intervention type approach to summer programming than just a general program. ESY is something we do every summer. Part of our services for students who qualify for that. Credit recovery is also something we've done over the course of summer. Same with incompletes and course completion. But all of these, we will certainly incorporate more opportunity. And then a couple of other areas, really working to look at those students who may be off track for graduation. Their failure of a core may not be directly a graduation requirement, but may fall in an area that's pulling them off track for graduation, maybe in a vocational area or something like that. So identifying those students and then engaging our vogue rehab and our TAP folks to potentially engage kids in some pre-employment activity. So those are students also that qualify for that programming, and we can do that work in the summer. Good job, team. We knew we had a tight timeframe trying to share all this with you. Of course, we hope to come back and share updates around these data sets. We're happy to get more data. There's other, I heard Amy, we'll get to that. But at this point, what questions do you have for us?
All right. Sure, I will keep it general. So since it's fresh on the mind, you said beef up the core. I'm curious, what is the relationship between beefing up the core and only having limited time? Like you can make a core curriculum better, but you can't buy more time. So how, what's the relationship there? Is it even possible to beef up the core enough to make up for the time?
Yes, I don't, I'm guessing. I'd like to give it a whirl.
I'll give it a shot, and then you can get up and think about it. So when I hear beef up the core, what I hear is we take the time that we already have and make it better or more effective. So that might be prioritizing the standards. I'm going to give more time and effort to a standard that's going to be crucial for the next grade level. Maybe spend less time in the standard, it's not as necessary. I'm going to add the intervention, like the whole routine. So just making some instructional changes within that core block that we already have to better meet the needs of kids where they currently are with those skilled assets.
What happens if a student doesn't meet a benchmark? Or I'm sorry, wait, that is a question. But first, what happens when a student does meet the benchmark? When they're getting this extra help? Does that extra help stop, or how does that look?
That's a great question. Kind of, both, we monitor it to make sure they maintain it, right? So we might, they might not have to go to the intervention instruction anymore. But as we do differentiate it in core, we still do small group instruction within the core block. We make sure that they're still maintaining those skills. Because you're right, kids sometimes moving in and out of those interventions or just close to the benchmark and then meet it, and then they, and so we just have to keep an eye on it and keep making adjustments to the instruction.
So what if my student doesn't meet the core? Like, you know, and specifically, I think, I think of the younger students. I think, you know, it can be a little approached differently in the higher grade levels. But, you know, at what point do they consider, do you consider holding somebody back? Or, you know, what is the conversation like?
Yeah, it's really individualized on a kid-by-kid basis, right? So Laura spoke about MTSS process, and we, you know, we have strong core instruction. We layer intervention after intervention. Some kids are getting two and three interventions. We monitor progress over time, and if we just see the gap continuing to widen, then we start asking other questions. Is there a disability? Do we need to think about an evaluation for special education? You know, what other factors might be coming into play? Retention is an option. It's probably one of the last ones we use because the research behind retention is not strong. So there's other options that we would invest in should a student not make progress.
Last one. How, have you experienced a situation where the data is telling you one thing, but the personal experience on the ground has told you something else? And what happened? What did you do and how did you reconcile that?
Absolutely, it happens. So especially in relation to the pass bridge data. It's, that's why it's just, it's a screener, and it's just one data piece. So we screen, and it really casts a net and gets you a group of kids that aren't meeting the benchmark, but the next step, and you're asking those questions as to why. So gathering more data, gathering teacher observation. You know, we don't just intervene based on that one data point. We have to go out and gather more information as to why they didn't meet the benchmark. And sometimes our teacher observation or form assessment data in the classroom will say they're doing okay. And maybe they just, you know, had trouble that day when they were testing. We take all of that into consideration. As Laura spoke to those diagnostics, we look at the whole picture before we decide our next steps.
Good, well, thank you.
Yep, anything?
All right, other questions?
I've got a question.
Yeah?
Dr. Lindman, well, I did miss some of them. Can you hear me? You mentioned the summer school component that expands beyond the 9th to 12th grade. Is that something that's being considered? Or is it something you all are certain they will do? And if so, how do you decide which students are? How do you determine what students get to 10?
It is something we've decided to do. We're moving forward with a more expanded summer school program because we think it's the right thing to do. The barrier that's in front of us right now is one that we can find ways around, and that's the financial piece, because it costs money to hire the staff. I'm also a little concerned about having enough staff to be able to support the need that's there. Because honestly, teachers are tired. It's been a really tough year. So that's probably my number one worry about the summer term. But then we will go through a process of identifying the criteria that we're going to utilize, and we'll start with the most intense needs and work our way backwards. So we're going to look very closely where our need is greatest, by subgroup, by data, assessment data, and we'll work our way, depending on what we're able to provide in terms of human and financial resources.
Okay, and that's one of the first things that came to mind too, were our teachers, you know, going through summer, which I know they want our students to be in the best space. But also, how do we navigate that on both ends of it? And so will you all determine who's available first to see how many students you will be able to include in this, or?
Yeah, typically, the way we've done it for our high school program is that sometime after spring break, we post for positions that we need to be able to offer the program. Of course, this year, there'll be far more positions. So we'll get, my hope is that we'll have a pretty good sense of how many folks we can sign on to work this summer, and then how many slots that will allow us to fill with students sometime mid to late April, so that we can do all of the communicating early May, so the families, you know, know what's available and how we might be able to support their student.
Okay, thank you. I have a question, but I want to start by just really thanking you. It's the day I got on the board. I think a well-informed board can guide the district, and this is the first step, that our customers are our kids, and we have to understand their reality. And this is a really important component of that. So thank you for that, and I hope we continue to get to see this information. So thank you for putting it together. This is probably more specific to elementary, only because we have so many elementary buildings, but imagine at the secondary counties as well. But we've talked many times here at the board about how we've grown so fast. And we've done a great job from like a facility standpoint, but I don't know that instructionally, we've done as good of a job from an equity standpoint or just clear expectations across the board. And so in Laura's presentation, you know, there was a lot in there about just the MTSS process, the win time, the use of diagnostics, the use of protocols, day-to-days, setting aside intervention time, you know, how much core instruction is designated for each of those. I'm curious to know how we have gone about creating clarity of expectation about what those things look like across buildings? I mean, are we using the same tools? Are we using the same resources? Do we have the same expectations for all of those processes?
Like the literacy toolbox?
Okay. It's not that Jen doesn't know these answers. She does. So a couple of different things that we do to have that consistency. One is we have a district leadership team. And that DLT is made up of the principal instructional coach and one of their teachers from their building. And the work of that team over the last couple, two to three years has been this exact topic. And that's been our focus. And so we've created, we've created an anchor resources and documents that building, that these building leadership teams can use to implement the work in tools, such as for MTSS. We've defined it, we have some look fours. In literacy, when you go through the three tiers of MTSS of literacy, what should be seen in small group and tier one? What should tier two look like? What do interventions look like? So we have some anchor resources to help us with that definition, so that teams can take it back and implement it with consistency. We also have what we call a literacy toolbox. And within that toolbox, it has some examples of interventions. So if a kid falls out on decoding, we can have some resources that teachers can use, and some routines teachers can use with those interventions. So I think having a guarantee in viable curriculum, right? Having resources that are common between all of our schools, and then just making sure that our leadership teams are equipped. that our leadership teams are equipped with the knowledge and understanding so that, because they're the ones obviously supporting it. And then Jen and I and those as well with secondary schools, as we go out and have touch points, we'll visit with principals, we will walk classrooms. Dr. Azinger joined us this past week. We visit professional learning, ILTs or PLCs, and so we can help provide support for those schools that still need it. So we've got, we're getting, we have a good foundation in literacy. Now we need to get that same foundation in math. So that's what we're working on now.
Other questions?
I just have a general question, I guess. We all know, or at least I think, I hope we all know that kids physically being in a building and COVID ending, should it ever happen, does it magically make all of our kids all of a sudden back on track learning? So have you picked up things that you can implement on a permanent basis? Are you, are you know, are you learning new things? Is anything going to come out of this that we can use moving forward?
Can I speak to that? Can you hear me? So we refer to COVID positives often and I think there's a lot of, you know, when you are faced with a situation that causes urgency, you are, it causes everybody to be urgent. And in that process, there are lots of things that we will continue to do beyond this. Our ILT is doing an MTSS book study. To be honest, we felt like we were pretty good at our MTSS structure before COVID. We did. But I repeatedly say the devil is in the details and we're learning and we're tweaking and we're adjusting and we're being, we're being very intentional and very thoughtful. The questions about what do you give up in core? Those are conversations that we have all the time. Do we need to have 45 minutes of science? Can we get that same instruction in 30? Can we get those same standards in that amount of time? Can we add this instructional piece for literacy that's important? Do we need to do a 30-minute read aloud or a 20-minute read aloud? Can we do it in 10 minutes? Can we do it every other day? Those are all conversations that we're having. But back to your question, will things differently? We absolutely will. And I think our instructional leadership team has grown as a result and we're really going back to the basics. I would say this year has caused us to go back to the basics and, you know, next year is going to be a year of rebuilding. Like what are solid foundational instructional pieces that are important that we've learned from and what will we continue to do? So your answer is yes, there's several things. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you to all of you for your time and the hard work that goes into this. Obviously, it's just the part, the real, you know, heavy lifting is, you know, yet to come and, and we certainly appreciate that. So we're, we'll look forward to continued data as we progress. I think that'll be important for all of us. I appreciate that. If there's no other questions, we will officially thank you and then recess for a few minutes. We'll start the business meeting at six o'clock. So we'll take a seven, eight minute recess.
Don't fans take some parents?
Can you say that?
Are we ready? All right. Are we on?
Yep.
Can you hear me now? All right, let's resume our meeting. Thank you for joining us. We are at item number five on our agenda, Board Rationale Summary. Any questions or comments on the rationale?
Just always really appreciate that policy, short stuff.
Yes.
Very helpful.
Thank you. All right, recognitions, number six.
Good evening. So great to see everybody in person. So I am here with Mr. Apple, Principal at Ankeny High School. My name is Dr. Jill Yurk, and I'm serving as the interim principal of Centennial this year. And we are here as a celebration for everybody. We are here to showcase the students. Do you guys want to come on in? And this is a true celebration. And Mr. Apple and I thought, instead of us having one high school speak and then the other high school speak, we decided to lock arms tonight and just say, this is a celebration of all Ankeny schools. Because it doesn't matter whether you are in one theater or the other. This is evidence that we have excellent teachers pre-K through 12th grade in our system. And it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter where you go to school. So these students before you are the best of the best. These are our National Merit finalists in Ankeny schools for this year. And their journey started when they took the PSAT. And from there, the top 1% across our country was selected based on their academic achievements. And then from there, and at that point, they were semifinalists. Now they have, they have spoken. They are now finalists, so they are the best of within that top 1%. And they have shown that they have the academic ability to get where they are as well as the potential to achieve very well in rigorous high school, or excuse me, rigorous college-level courses. So they should be so proud. Parents should be so proud. Our board should be proud. Teachers should be proud because it took everyone working together to make this magic happen. And then these people obviously did the heavy lifting.
So just want to, you know, here's a little bit of brief data here. The first National Merit finalist was initially announced. The electronic records go all the way back to early 1970s. This is the largest class for the city of Ankeny. I'm going to put this in perspective. Prior to the split of the high school, the largest class ever was in 1993, which was five students. The largest number is four from Ankeny High School, which we have tonight, by the way. So almost 30 years later, we have achieved again. Then you add in the additional eight students from Centennial High School. We have 12 National Merit finalists in front of you. And that is a credit to all of our teachers and all of our staff from early childhood all the way up through their senior year. It wouldn't be possible there without our teachers, our coaches, our custodians, our bus drivers, every single individual, our food service. All of those people put care and effort into making these students successful. And our school board has shown that dedication to the education for our students. So I want to congratulate them on that. And then we're going to actually have our students introduce themselves to you. They're going to be giving you their name, what building they're in, and also talking a little bit about their future plans. But thank you very much. Please join me in welcoming our 12 National Merit.
Hi, my name is Karen Bott. I'm a senior at Ankeny Centennial, and I plan to study computer science.
Hi, I'm Cora Bovee. I'm a senior at Ankeny High School, and I plan to study biochemistry.
Hello, my name is Lucy Bruner. I go to Ankeny High School, and I will be studying biomedical engineering, but I'm unsure as to where.
Hi, I'm Lawrence Den. I go to Centennial. I plan to study computer science at the University of Iowa. And then I guess I'll play it from here by there.
My name is Wyatt Eason from Ankeny High School, and I plan to study mathematics at Iowa State University.
My name is Zane Eason from Ankeny High School, and I plan to go into computer science.
My name is Andrew Stapleton, and I plan to go to Iowa State University for civil and environmental engineering.
My name is Spencer Thiele. I'm a student at Centennial, and I plan to study computer science at Ankeny, or sorry, at Iowa State.
My name is Megan White. I go to Ankeny Centennial, and I will be attending University of Missouri-Kansas City to major in biology and pre-med and also play soccer.
It's, of course, fantastic to honor these students and their accomplishments and to the moms and dads and family that are here. It's, you know, it's a testimony too to the hard work that you put in as parents in educating your students. And it's a moment to be proud of, and we're excited to honor this large class. And then we'll continue that trend hopefully into the future. So if your students have study tips for their fellow students, you tell them to pass them on, right? I think we're going to take a couple of quick pictures and then come back. So we will take just a two-minute recess for that part of the process. So parents, you're welcome to come on out. We'll take group pictures. So just a two-minute recess.
Congratulations, everyone.
Oh, my gosh. Spicy taco. What were you thinking? Large screen.
We just kind of developed a dichotomy of seeing how there's been struggles and at the same time, and in the same phases, there's been a lot of amazing successes, all codes and things in the same environment. Six hours later, it's on the horizon, over like.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, yes.
And so I just. In a month, no more.
Are we back? Are we back on, Samantha? Getting there? Hello, check?
Yep.
Okay. Good. We're back in session here. We are on item number seven, Communication from the Public. Samantha, is there anyone asking to speak to the public, from the public?
I do not have any.
Okay. Number eight, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve and accept these consent agenda items as recommended?
Motion, second.
Questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number nine, Information Only Presentation, FY22 Proposed Certified Budget.
Okay, well, good evening. I wanted to present tonight the proposed budget. Just a reminder, this, the piece that you will be, I guess, giving preliminary approval to is the publication that will go in the paper and setting the date of public hearing for the April 5th board meeting, at which time we will hold a public hearing and then approve the budget. So going forward then into the presentation, I wanted to remind you of the Board Policy 800, which has some of the guiding principles that we established when putting together the budget document. I'm not going to go through all of these, but I think the budget obviously does incorporate many of these fiscal management guiding principles. The transparency, the information is clear and hopefully easy to understand. If it's not, these questions, we'll try to be fairly interactive here. The balancing of the budget, if it does speak to balancing recurring spending authority with expenditures, so we'll talk a little bit about spending authority tonight. We'll talk about taxation, our principle to reduce taxation whenever possible. In those levies that we do have discretionary purview over, and those would be our cash reserve levy and the management fund. We will seek to minimize resources and produce the effect as defined in the strategic plan for our budget. Obviously, we do use save first when constructing our buildings, as referenced by the election tomorrow night for the revenue purpose statement. We use pebble for repair and maintenance of our current sites to keep those up to date. And capacity, so we're going to talk about geo bonds tonight a little bit later as well. And then obviously, we want to minimize short-term debt, meaning borrowing from other funds or other sources whenever possible. So we're going to make sure we levy enough cash reserve to minimize that short-term borrowing. And then the projections, which I haven't had a lot of time yet to delve into the five-year projection models through our software. This spreadsheet for the budget document was, I guess, updated after the governor signed. Work through that and read you updates throughout this process until we get to the week of that board meeting. So that's just a reminder of the timeline, which I don't think we need to spend a whole lot of time on since I already touched on that earlier. I also, this next slide, we've already talked about. I think we have a good understanding of kind of where we've been, what we know going into this year. I might add that, you know, our estimated deficit is somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 to $3 million for fiscal '21. We're projecting, you know, solvency somewhere between, you know, 8 and 9% for the end of '21 and then into fiscal '22. And we know that our valuations continue to grow, which does have an impact on our overall tax rate. So those funding challenges, like we talked about, was, were the shortfall due to the decreased enrollment this fall, which is the basis for our budget into fiscal '22. We'll also talk about the unspent authorized budget or our spending authority and the fact that we're projected to overspend that this year and next year again. And then, you know, again, we've talked about the tax base and our historically low SSA. So keep on through that one. The next slide is going to show you just a little bit of history with student enrollment growth. It does show that dip in the middle, and then we're projected to rebound next year. And these are based on the projections from Rob Schwartz and his firm. So next year, we're projected to grow by another couple hundred students. So we'll be back above our last year level. And then that growth is going to be a little bit more modest going forward in the 200 range versus 3 and 4 and 500, where we've seen in the previous years. And again, this is just kind of reiterating that trend, showing that by 2027, we're estimating a revenue, or we're estimating student population of about 13,500. This is the history of the state supplemental aid. With that 2.4% SSA, state supplemental aid is going to grow by $179 per student. I have that broken out into two pieces because of that $10 additional aid that we receive through the transportation funding, and it's kind of tacked along with that. And that's to narrow the gap between the highest district cost per pupil that some other districts are receiving and those of the lower. And we are the state average, we're the lower group of schools. So we will see that extra $10 next year. This is just to kind of show what the aid and levy actually looks like. We don't spend a lot of time going through that just because it's a very long spreadsheet that kind of takes our enrollment information from going into next year, takes our SSA, it adds in some of our weighted enrollment, and then there's various other calculations for some of our other categorical monies. And there's some cost per pupil assessed to those as well. So this is just to kind of show you kind of what that looks like. And this is the portion that talks about the weighted weekends, as you can see, supplementary waiting for concurrent enrollment, at-risk, ELO, as well as the special ed. This is showing the valuation trend. And I had a good question from one of the board members on Friday. I think it was Katie. What is TIF? So I wanted to kind of cover what TIF means. But you can see that, you know, valuation continues to grow. And this is taxable valuation. And then the TIF is actually, it represents property tax revenues above a base valuation. And so if, like the C or another jurisdiction is trying to pass some urban revitalization, they might enter into a TIF area of town. And they'll set a base valuation. And then as the development comes in and the valuations grow, they set a, they might levy some debt or issue some debt against that. And that additional growth in valuation goes back to the TIF district and not to those other jurisdictions. So right now, we have $290, I think that's a million dollars in TIF right now, which is, I think, relatively low considering the size of our city. So not a big piece of our valuation. The next slide kind of shows the difference between the levy rates between fiscal '21 and fiscal '22. I will tell you that it did change slightly today. And so you have at your spot some updated publication and tax certification. And that is because of the sale today of our general obligation bonds. Those came, were very competitive today, very promising. And so that's changed slightly our debt service for next year. And so our rate was changed from 17.318101 to 17.31652. So it's just a fraction of cent, and still rounds to 17.32. So everything else in my presentation, I think, is going to be good to go. But you'll see that, again, because of that taxable valuation increase, obviously, it generates more revenue at the same rate. So just the kind of way things shook out through the formula, our general fund rate is going down by 20 cents. And that's even with us levying more in cash reserves. So you'll see those various pieces there that make up our cash reserve. But overall, you know, we're levying 8 cents more in cash reserve, but we have the other pieces that, because of valuation growth, are driving that down, that rate down in the general fund. Management, I am going to propose a bit of an increase there. And the reason being is, I think we've talked about here, our property and liability insurance is paid through the management fund. And we are expecting, you've heard from our agent, that we're expecting about a 20%, 20 to 25%, we'll probably be on the higher end of that increase in our premiums for next year. So I have boosted that up, even though we do have a fairly healthy balance in that management fund, I have bumped that up from a million to a million and a half. In addition, we are doing some analysis of an equipment breakdown, insurance policy that would allow us to shift expenditures from the general fund for those maintenance and equipment repairs over to the management fund through an insurance premium. So we're kind of looking at that. So I am anticipating expenditures will be up over the $2 million mark. So we're still going to draw on some of that reserve that we have. But did want to increase that levy just a bit due to that. So we're going up about 9 cents in the management fund. Pebble kind of stays the same over time. We just continue to levy that $1.67. But just to note that the pebble will generate about $0.5 million more, $1 million more than the previous year at the same rate just because of our valuation increase. And then we have our debt service, which is going to be fairly stable. Even though we've gone through, we're going through that sale and it'll net various savings for us, the way we've structured debt is just to kind of keep that rate stable right now.
Can I ask a question? What, is that increase in property and liability, is that typical?
It is a national trend. It's what they, we're in what they call a hard market right now nationally. So, and it's just, it's somewhat new to our experience. So our other claims that we've had in the past, and that's why we're kind of on that higher end. Other districts will probably see somewhere in the neighborhood of 15%. We're targeted to give up at the 20 and 25. And I have more information I can share with you, my agent, to explain some of that. You think about the things that are going on just across the nation this last year, the wildfires, the deratio, just some of that other natural disasters that have occurred. And that's kind of driving that a bit, so. Here we have our property tax levy trend, and we've talked about this before. We've potentially been bringing that rate down whenever possible. We were up over $22 at one point in time, I think around 2008, 2009. So we're surpassed that, that big spike many years ago. And we're projecting a decrease of 9 cents to the rate down to 17.32 going into fiscal '22. So this one has a little animation, so it might get a little tricky. So there's several different funding mechanisms in the budget. And you'll see that on the worksheets that are on page 70 and 71 of your packet, the budget worksheets for the various funds. But we talk a lot about general fund just because it's our biggest fund. It's the main operating fund of the district, funds most of our salaries and benefits. And so the publication that goes in the paper is for all funds. And it's showing the resources and the expenditures for all funds for a three-year period. So I wanted to just kind of highlight the other areas of the budget. So we also include activity fund. And for the activity fund, I did want to mention that I am projecting, there are down quotids this year, obviously, with not being able to have full capacity at our events and some of that. So last year, we were at about $1.5 million of expenditures and projecting somewhere around $850 this year. And so next year, I'm showing us, you know, pulling out of that, but still at about $1.2 million. The management fund, like we talked about earlier, I did increase levy due to that property and liability premium. The sales tax, which is our save, you'll see that, those resources jump a bit if you look at the individual funds on that 70 and 71 page. And that's due to some anticipated proceeds from revenue bonds that we will be issuing for the next elementary, elementary 12. Physical plant levy, like I spoke earlier, that $500,000 increase due to the taxable valuation and revenues. The debt service. The debt service, it will be a stable rate due to the bond structure for these twenty-one bonds. And then we have our two proprietary funds. And those are nutrition and for an after-school program. And again, as you can imagine, just with closures last year, you know, the hybrid structure this year, that has affected the revenue that these two funds have been able to generate and, and and obviously the expenditure side too. Like I said, nutrition has been holding its own because we've been able to, you know, seek the reimbursement on meals at a hundred percent for all students. And the before and after, I think truly is doing, holding its own as well, just from the fact that they've been able to kind of staff accordingly. And so, you know, the students are at that level of enrollment that they were used to in the past, we've been able to maintain ratios with your staff. So still fairly healthy in those funds. You know, that is kind of a difference in some of our other districts around. I, you know, they are looking to perhaps borrow from, you know, make transfers from the general fund to their enterprise funds just to keep them alive. So just a testament to those two programs and how they're handling things for their operations. So all that together, pulled up together, all those funds kind of make up what goes into that publication. And then at the very bottom, and I know it's really hard to read on the slide, but you've got that full publication in the handouts that I give you, is that $17.32 rate. And once it goes in the paper, we can't go, we can't change that rate up. It can go down. And the expenditure level cannot go up, it can go down. So if any modifications need to be made, we can definitely go down, but we can't go up from here. So. Also wanted to talk to you about the tax impact. And this is a slide that we've reached year after year. Even though we have a nine cent decrease in the rate that we're projecting because of the residential rollback increasing next year, the actual taxes that are paid to a residential taxpayer will go up slightly. And so there's a couple of examples. For a $250,000 home, the annual increase is about $46 on a nine cent decrease. Commercial really doesn't change at all. It stays at that ninety percent rollback. So commercial would actually see a decrease in their taxes because of the tax rate decrease. So, so key points, I guess, the key takeaways here are obviously that proposed nine cent reduction. Again, this may change just ever so slightly when we certify to the Department of Management. Our SSA assumption is known now. It's not assumption, it's known, 2.4. Our solvency, like I said, is within the targeted range, hopefully somewhere between eight and nine percent. But our, and our spending authority is still within the target range of five to fifteen, but we're going to keep a close eye on that and continue to look for areas where we can align expenditures to, to the revenues there. So I'm going to go into a little bit more detail about unspent balance or spending authority, if I could here for, for a few minutes. At the top half of that screen is kind of things that are formula driven. So you'll see off to the, to the left there, it tells you the authority. So you know, that, that's just kind of how everything plays out with our enrollment and the cost per pupil and how that all gets generated out through the formula to create that annual spending authority. The pieces in blue are the board SBRC items that we talk about here. So we come to you various times throughout the year for approval to MSA, which is another way of saying annual spending authority or unspent balance. We seek additional modified spending authority for things like special education deficit balances. We seek it for our at-risk. We have a couple of other things in here for the on-time funding when we have an increase in enrollment. This year we didn't have an increase, but we had more students that were open enrolled out that had never been on our certified enrollment. So we got a little bit of spending authority for that. So those pieces are in the top blue box and some of those are just estimates at this point in time because we haven't closed our books yet. I don't know what our special ed deficit is going to be. I have kind of an idea. And I do know what our number two there, I know that our our open enrollment was an increase of, you know, 680,000. But the, and then that million seventy at the top includes the request that we took for initial staff from heritage. But it's also got a projection of where I think our EL deficit is going to be. So some of it's projected, some of it's known. But I, I guess the point that I'm trying to make here is, you know, again, I don't know what our special deficit is going to be this year or next year. I don't know what our on-time funding is going to be for next year, but I assume that 211 students are coming like we have in our other projections. And so all that is adding to our fund or our unspent balance for next year. And it's just a projection. It could change like it changed this year. We thought we were getting 300 new kids and we ended up, you know, in a negative. So that has shifted the, the landscape for our unspent balance. On further down, there's another blue box that where I have the gold arrow there. That is our miscellaneous income. And the, the reason I wanted to highlight that is because some of the areas that we're going to be down in revenue is in miscellaneous income. And those are things like facility rentals, being unable to open our facilities up, federal grants, Medicaid, and we talked about Medicaid the other day. That's a federal source of revenue. We weren't able to fill every single day. We had students, you know, some were virtual, some were hybrid. And so I'm anticipating a, you know, less than budgeted amount in that. And so, and really overall donations are down a bit. And the other piece that falls into miscellaneous is that transfer that we had kind of thought we were going to be able to do from the before and after care program, had they been able to operate that full capacity. Last year we were planning on using some of that fund balance that they ended with and moving it over to the general fund for our technology purchases. So all of that feeds into that miscellaneous income and that's down. So you can see that that doesn't help our authority landscape. And then going into this year, we knew we were going to be, you know, having more expenditures because we opened a new building. We had FFNE. We pushed some of those technology purchases forward that didn't arrive last year that were unanticipated because of, you know, going to a virtual setting for our K three learners. So some of that spending then is also taking out, is taking away from that. And as our spending levels are higher, then obviously that takes up away from our expense balance. And so to the left, the estimated fiscal twenty ending balance for our spending authority is 29 million. And then you can see how we kind of go down to 21.3 and then I think it's a 16 million. And again, it's a projection. But obviously we need to hopefully make some alignment. And we've done, I would say we've done what we can through, you know, through the staffing that Jesse talked about last time. Through things like that equipment breakdown, insurance piece, and some other areas as we are talking through our negotiations. So just wanted you to know, you know, we are working on it. We are being mindful of the need to, to reduce expenditures wherever we can. And I know, I think there was a comment last week when we met with a small about, it seems kind of, you know, counterintuitive that we would be talking about reducing our tax rate when, when we're, you know, in a little bit of a budget crunch here. So but truly the tax rate isn't going to help us. If I levy cash, it's not going to help our authority. The only thing that can help our authority is to somehow get more miscellaneous income, have a bunch of new kids come next fall, which we're really hoping for, or somehow make those expenditures alignments that we need to do. So I hope that's helpful in kind of talk through how unspent balance works. I, I know it's kind of a hard concept and it really doesn't mean anything about money. On the next slide, we talk about it, it, it limits the money, it limits what we can spend, but it's not but it's not cash. And overspending is, is not an option. So we have to maintain what we have left as, as best we can going, going forward. So this next slide is the final slide and it's just kind of showing you that trend where unspent balance authorized and unauthorized. Sorry. The authorized is the piece that includes all the fund balance, the unspent, the total, I should say. There's one, the lower of the two, the eight point six nine on the far right. The piece, once you take out the categorical pieces that are kind of restricted to those items. So we don't carry a lot of categorical analysis. So it's, it's not a big difference between the two, but for some districts, they may be showing a positives unspent balance, but when you take out a categorical, well, they're either zero or close to that. So those targeted ratios and then the next slide is just kind of showing you for next year, the breakdown, federal, local, state. And then those transfers. And that will be at 150 million, just over 150 million. I do have a balanced budget proposed in expenditures for next year at the same level for the general fund. And then the total tax levy control shows you kind of that breakdown. This is just property taxes. We're going to be just over 78 million through those various funds that levy the taxes. And it shows you the pieces that are board controlled, state controlled, and board controlled. Any questions on that one? At length about levies. And then the last, I think this is the last slide actually. The last slide there is the per pupil expenditure based on our weighted enrollment. So that's going to be more than that 12,000 students because it's going to include the special ed and those other waivers that we talked about. But our next year's level is at 10,000, $10,981, which is very low competitive, you know, comparative to the rest of the state. So we are on the lower side of that. And then it shows the respective areas that, that that makes up the instruction, right? We saw it's the largest part of that. So happy to answer questions.
Fine. On the, the slide that shows our annual spending authority?
Yep.
So you said the miscellaneous income, you explained some of the things that go into that. Yet on, like in fiscal year 2022, we're still trending downward. When, you know, hopefully I would assume that you would kind of be able to get some of those things back going on a normal basis. So could you maybe help me understand a little bit the thought process between the unit now and trend?
Yep. So in fiscal twenty-one, do you have $830,000 of SRO two or CARES money coming or it's actually, you know, we just claimed for it. So I have that revenue counted in fiscal twenty-one. And that will not be, as far as I know, I don't know the third round of CARES money yet. So that's where that dip is, is taking place. You know, I do anticipate our Medicaid to rebound somewhat and our facility rentals to come back up to the levels, but the big piece is the lack of that CARES money for twenty-two.
So did we get a good chunk of fiscal year twenty?
We got 200,000 in fiscal twenty. We showed that fully expended.
Yeah. So what would the difference be in fiscal year twenty? Though, I guess, you know, for the, that number, for any more CARES money and kind of go back to normal. I guess I'm just trying to understand the, the difference if there's more to it than just that CARES money.
And in fiscal twenty, we, we did that transfer from before and after 750,000. We did, that I was able to do in twenty-one or twenty-two. So that's a big piece of it.
Well, that, that kind of needed to build back up. Is that how that works?
Yeah. I, the first year we did a one and a half million dollar transfer and that was after they'd been open for like four years. So it took that long to get to that much. And then the next year they had a really amazing year and that's when I took that 700, I should say I took, but 750,000. And I was actually projecting about a million being able to transfer for this fiscal year.
Sure.
Until we had to close for the, the last quarter of the year to the summer. So
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I just want to probably thank Jennifer again, anyhow, but you were a bit passive during the meeting as well, so. No offense. You know, just sit with us at three thirty till five o'clock on a Friday night and walk through that. I just really, really appreciate that. So thank you for doing that.
I'm going to go sign.
Good. Excellent. All right. Thank you. Number 10, old business contracts and agreements. May I have a motion to approve the contracts and agreements as presented?
Motion.
Second. Questions or comments? Saying none. All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, that was 10A. Okay, 10B. Staffing plan. May I have a motion? To, yes, to, yes, yes. May I have a motion to approve the 2021, 2021, 22 final staffing plan as presented?
Motion. Second.
Okay.
Jesse, give the word. I'll talk a little bit about that because of some modifications.
I'm talking a little bit because of what?
Well, there's some modifications.
There are modifications, absolutely. Sorry. Is it all right if I sit here? Would you all?
Yes, you're fine.
Great. It's, it's so unusual for me to not be at the podium talking to you all about the staffing plans for months. But I'm happy to remain seated. So I did, to Al's point, wanted to just call out a couple of things that are added to the staffing plan from our conversation a couple of weeks ago. Hopefully none of this feels surprising because they're things that we talked about having. I did on, if you all have the document there, slide five. We did go ahead and add the names of the buildings. Where at this point at least, right, there's always a little bit of shuffling that happens. We anticipate these roles would ultimately end up. We did add in connection to our, our thinking about the, the staffing at the high schools and the leadership at the high schools. You'll see two new positions, which we've talked about, you know, previously in, in different combinations. The student and building support specialists are the SBSS rules. We do have an interim currently in one of those roles at Centennial. So these are two in addition to that interim. It's, it's taking the interim position, making it permanent and then equalizing at Inkney High School as well. And then we did run the numbers as we told you all we would on the building subs. And that's the bottom line item that you've got there on that slide. So we look at a building sub. We look at the cost of having one building sub in every building. That's, that's the cost there. So in each of our prepaid 12 buildings, it works out to be, if you look at slide seven, less than $50,000 more than a daily sub with a lot typically. Rule. And we've heard, as I, as I shared with you last week, a lot of just overwhelmingly positive feedback from our buildings about what an asset those folks have been. Not just in COVID years, but at last, last year when we had started to pilot that project as well. So those are the additions and changes on that slide five, which is the building slide. And if we look at slide six, we have added one director of operations as we have talked about here due to, you know, some, some restructuring and attempt to kind of re-scope roles with some retirements of folks in the operations team, a new role that combines a couple of previous roles to account for those staff changes that are happening naturally. And connected to that, I would point out just right above that, I think it called, what did I call it last? Lead tech or something like that. The real name is server systems administrator, which sounds a lot more appealing to apply for, to be, to have on your resume, right? And probably more accurately describes, describes that position. So same job, different job title that more accurately reflects what that role would be. Those are the additions and the changes.
Those are the additions and the changes that we made to the staffing plan since our conversation a couple of weeks ago.
So just for some clarity on this slide.
What is it called at the top?
Central Support. Just, I can't tell the number, it's full out, or, yes, I think, Carrie.
It sticks on my screen.
Yeah, it sticks up here. Okay. Those are all, those are not new? Those are, I'm like struggling to understand if it's just reshuffling or what's going on there.
Yep. So these are new positions that, in most cases, but they are re-scoped work. So if we look at the Assistant Director of Special Programs role, we currently have a coordinator role, but it doesn't have the full, this is a replacement for that new title, re-scoped a little bit. It doesn't currently have administrative evaluative component, and that is the person who is responsible for overseeing some of the beyond, right? And so we've reshaped that role, but it's not this position in addition to the coordinator position, retitled, re-scoped, to more fully encompass the need of that. The Human Resources Manager, we have a compliance specialist this year. And as we do some reshuffling across departments, that role would be replaced with a Human Resource Manager, which is a lower, sort of a slightly lower level position, and more of a typical kind of Human Resources Generalist kind of position. So not adding on top of replacing accounting supervisor. We've got some retirements and a smaller head count in the business office as the natural attrition is happening, thinking about instead of refilling every position, kind of combining a couple, replacing it with a new job title, with a little bit more leadership ability, a little bit more supervisory experience. Server Systems Administrator, we've got somebody who's doing this work for a stipend. This basically formalizes, hey, instead of doing the stipend every year, let's actually change what this job is. We have somebody who's sort of the lead tech, right? Giving them sort of a new job title, same, probably same person, right? Not adding a new person, and then the Director of Operations we've talked about. So I'm sorry, that's a lot of words, but they're all just a little bit different overall. Head count will be lower in the central office, but we've kind of moved pieces around to allow for some of these changes. Fewer people, more complex work.
So maybe just to piggyback on what Katie said, so these totals don't really reflect new money, because a lot of them, we already have people, but they might be a little different. Might be a little more money because you increased responsibilities, but you also had some people leave that you didn't fill those positions, so it's.
That's exactly right. I think in the central office, overall, the total sort of personnel budget in the central office for next year will be lower, because we're not backfilling every position. But the work still has to get done, right? So if somebody leaves or not filling that position, stuff has to kind of shuffle around a little bit. And sometimes that changes a job title or, you know, leads to kind of the, I guess I would call it the supervisory level of that position needing to shift a little bit.
So just to clarify, the head count and the budget at central office will both be lower next year?
Correct.
Okay.
Back right there. Let's hear any other board members.
I also want to point out that included in the staffing plan is the recommendation that Jill Yurk will be on the principal at Centennial High School. I spoke a couple of weeks ago with some focus groups over there that included parents and teachers and students. I'd ask that they provide me with some information that they saw as important characteristics for the building principal. After they did a nice job, a thoughtful job of that, it didn't take long for each of the groups independently and totally independently of each other to, it turned into an advocacy for Jill to continue in that role and fulfill that, fulfill that role. Jill is interested in the position and would like to do that. She also wants to maintain our connection with Orbis. And so we have talked, we've done some planning already. One involved thinks that by having Jill and Peter Apple work together in a cooperative leadership role for Orbis will strengthen that program and help go back as we move forward. And so clearly, that seems like the right thing to do for the district. It seems like the right thing to do for students and parents and faculty at Centennial. And so that is included in this personnel recommendation tonight.
Excellent. Brian?
So we're voting on this proposal. What are the, the, is the slide for building substitutes, is that just kind of an informal slide? Are we actually approving something on there?
They are. Your building subs are included on slide five as well. So we look at the building adjustments and then the central support adjustments. That's really the request from the district administration approving those two slides. So I just wanted to give you guys a little bit more information about sort of the comparison between building subs, since we had talked about that a couple of weeks ago. So that's an FYI on that one. The request is on slide five.
Got it. I completely missed that. Thank you for connecting to that.
Totally fine.
So I just want to ask that the additional forty-eight thousand dollars to have permanent subs, the, the, what you get out of that is worth that additional money?
I think if we had our building principals in this room, I think one of them would say yes. We surveyed them and have, let's see, nothing but positive responses.
Maybe a little history behind that. You know, over the last four, five, six years, we've had some pretty severe issues with sub shortage. And I do believe that having some of these permanent subs in the building alleviates some of that constant stress of trying to make sure you have positions full on a daily basis within the building. And so I think we were even doing that stuff before.
That's right.
Unusual year, and I think it's an action to help us not have, you know, unfilled sub positions.
Yeah, I think that's right. You know, the, one of the real benefits, there, I think there are a lot of benefits, but to your point, Jim, I think one of the things that, that for us shows up most frequently is even solid job of having coverage for teacher vacancies, like we really have been all of twenty twenty-one so far and before, after we did a real push to get a bunch of additional substitute teachers hired. There are still jobs that go unfilled, and typically those jobs, because if you're a daily sub, you can decide, do I want to pick this job or do I not want to take this job? Those tend to be special education positions time and time again. So the classrooms where arguably kids most need to have a teacher, right, are the ones that people are saying, I'm not interested in taking that, I'm a daily sub. Our building subs, they are assigned by the building where they work. And so I think that's a real concrete, every single day kind of thing where there is a benefit. It's hard to put a dollar amount on, I think. The other thing is a great pipeline for future teacher talent, which I think ends up saving us money down the road. We've got strong student teachers or strong other people from the community who we think, hey, maybe eventually this is somebody who would want a full-time teacher job, gives them an opportunity to get to know our kids, gets to know our buildings. And then when it comes time to hire, we don't have to spend as much money going out recruiting, doing all of that. We've already got a ready network of strong talent that knows us, and we know that.
I didn't mean to ruffle any feathers, I just didn't think, knowing my job, but didn't at least ask.
I'm glad you asked.
And then on that same thought line, I know that in some buildings, there was floating or permanent associates. Is that something that's also going to happen? It's happening?
Yeah, I'll tell you right now, the plan for, for associates is to really take a look over, I'm going to say over the course of the summer, but here that is sort of a loose period of time, and really work, we're talking about special education associates, working closely with Nancy and her team to understand in terms of IEP minutes, what are actually the number of associates and the number of hours we need the special education associates in a building? And then do some shuffling of people from one school to another. We think there are probably some efficiencies to be found without shorting any kid who has IEP minutes. Same kind of thing with general education associates, trying to get to the end of this year with as many sort of long-term associate subs as we can, so we can really do kind of that deep dive and shuffle over the course of the summer, and I think probably right size a little bit and find some savings.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? In favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, item C. Student fees. May I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two student fees as presented?
Motion.
Sorry.
Question or comment on these? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion passes. Item D. So not to exceed twenty-one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, million, twenty-one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand general obligation school refunding bond series twenty twenty-one A. May I have a motion to approve the sale of the bonds?
Motion.
Second. Before we go, we have our financial advisor on the call tonight to go through the results.
Excellent, excellent. Nafila.
I missed that motion because I was trying, trying to get my word in, so. Who moved in second?
I wrote, moved it.
Amy? Second came. All right.
Amy and Amy.
Yeah, the two Amys.
All right. Who do we have online? I can't see from here.
Sorry, we have Suzanne Gerlach from PFM here with us to go over the results of today's bond sale.
Excellent.
Yes, good evening. Thanks for joining virtually tonight from my lovely basement office in Altoona, Iowa. I am thrilled to report the results of the refunding sale today. We are refunding, this is a current refunding of the outstanding Geo Bonds two thousand thirteen A and two thousand thirteen B. As part of the sale, Moody's affirmed the district's very strong rating of double A two through the rating process. And today we went into the market at, at nine thirty this morning, and we received eleven bids. And so our goal with the competitive sale is to receive at least three bids, and we received eleven bids today. So fantastic demand for the district's bonds this morning. Those eleven bids came from over forty-eight different firms. And so we measure the, the, the kind of overall cost based in terms of true interest costs, which is sort of that aggregated, you know, APR for the, the bonds. And the range of bids from bid number one to bid number eleven was from one point zero three percent all the way to one point one nine percent. So quite a large spread between the winning bid and the last place bid today. The winning bid came from Piper Sandler out of Minneapolis, Minnesota, at a true interest cost of one point zero three percent. And there was a premium, which means they want higher coupons, but they have to pay you cash upfront. So there, so we are refunding twenty million, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars of bonds, but we're only issuing eighteen million, three hundred, a par volume to do that because they're paying a premium today. So we did restructure after we received bids to make sure we were matching the budget. I know Jennifer just talked about the debt service levy for the fiscal twenty-two budget to make sure we were matching those based on the budget. And so after we resized, after everything is said and done, the very last page of that bid tab is the savings. That's the most exciting part. We are moving quite a bit of principal to, to be paid off in June first, two thousand twenty-two, so it looks a little wonky. It looks like there's negative savings in that year, but that's so that we have that stable tax rate based on, based on the district's budget for next year. And that really increases the savings in the future years. So overall, net present value savings on this refunding of one million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, ninety-nine dollars, that's almost two millions of net present value savings, which is nine point seven percent of par. And our goal with the current refunding is three percent or more of savings. So we were at nine point seven percent savings today, so fantastic results with gross debt service savings, which means these are, these are dollars that your taxpayers will no longer pay on the bonds for debt service, gross debt service savings of two million, one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So very exciting and excellent sale results today.
That is good news. You can come back every meeting and give us that.
We thank Suzanne for her great work in assisting us with all of, everything through the whole process. So thanks, Suzanne.
Yep. Any questions for either? No? All right, excellent, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes, excellent. Thank you very much. Item eleven, new business, item A. May I have a motion to approve a request for FY twenty twenty-two, pose budget publication and set a public hearing date for April fifth, twenty twenty-one, six P M. in the boardroom located at three oh six Southwest School Street in Inkney, Iowa?
Motion.
Second.
Comments or questions on this public hearing posting? Right? All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, policies. May I have a motion to approve of two readings of the presented policies? Policies are for immediate implementation upon the second and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
Questions or comments on any of these policies? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C. May I have a motion to approve request to sell land and temporary E for March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at four P M. in the boardroom located at three oh six Southwest School Street, Inkney, Iowa?
Motion.
Second. Questions or comments on this?
So this is at four? Four o'clock?
Yes, four P M.
Well, we have a, the work session.
From two until four.
Right, and so.
Okay, and then, sorry, after that, and then there are meetings at six?
We could do a, how long will it take?
Public hearing?
Public hearing.
In my twelve, thirteen years, I've never had any public hearing. I guess.
If you want a break between the four o'clock until the four P M. starts.
I literally was asking just because it was a different time.
Yeah, and I noticed that, um.
I just did it on March twenty-two, or something different was happening, that's all.
Yeah, other than it's a different day, wonky day.
I think we're public.
Yeah, no, I think we want to keep our business meeting still at six.
Yeah, because the public hearing date for the budget is at six.
Right, yeah, I would, let's amend that to six.
Oh, yeah, sorry, the budget's April fifth.
Right, but six is, I think, would be our better time.
Do you want the hearing at the, at six or?
At the business meeting at six, yeah.
Right.
All right. Actually just need to amend, right?
Motion to amend the original motion.
Can I have a motion to amend the motion to set the time at six P M.?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, good. Once this is good. All right. All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? All right. Board member reports. I always feel like we start in the same spot, so I'm going to start, uh, we'll do it, Lori. We'll start with Lori this time.
Um, I actually wrote down so I can remember. Remind everybody to get out and vote tomorrow because it's the revenue purpose statement. You don't say how to vote, we just say vote, correct?
I think you can, he can.
Say whatever you want.
Well, we want everyone to vote to approve our revenue purpose statement so we can use that save money. This is final week at the legislature. There's lots of education bills that have been parsed out, renamed, renumbered. I think the U E N has had some, and the I S B have both had some great emails about what bills are out there and how they affect our public education. So we've got this week to advocate. I know the TAPSC group has got some advocacy things going on, and I just encourage all of us to keep contacting our, our representatives and senators to. to advocate for what's good for our public education. And then one last thing was we had a fuel fund meeting this past week, which I know in the past, we've always had our Fill the Fund Day in April. And with COVID and with the new Department of Ag giving us money for the free lunches and everything, we're working on kind of repurposing, expanding what our fuel fund is used for and what our Fill the Fund Day in April is going to be this year. So there's going to be more information from coming from that. But one of the really interesting things that Scott Litchfield shared with us, and hopefully I can get some expanded information from him. He is our, the School Nutrition Association's legislative advocate for the state. And they are working to, there's a push at the national level to make the school lunch program permanently free for school districts. And the equity issues that that would help close are just amazing. And he had mentioned at our fuel fund meeting that they would really appreciate people in the district contacting our national, like our state senators, our US senators, our US representatives for Iowa, to just tell them how great a thing that has been for our school district to have the school lunch program be free for everyone. There's even some talk at the state level, I don't know if it'll make it through the funnel, about having the state cover breakfast for students. And so I'll try to see if we can have Scott maybe send us out some information, but he's going to be meeting with our senators and representatives, I believe, the end of this week. Is that right, Dr. Aesinger?
I think that's right.
And they're going to be talking about this, and there's a real effort because they've seen across the country what having those lunches available for all students has meant. And so I would just encourage everybody to contact their senators and representatives and tell them that, you know, if there's a way that they can see to have our school lunch program be something that's covered, not from a district level, but from a national level, that would be amazing. That's all I got.
The chair up?
I have nothing.
Brian?
Congratulations to the senior basketball team. I was, basketball is kind of my sport, so I'm super excited. My son was interested in going, and that was awesome. But I showed up, I didn't realize I needed a wristband, but there were some very nice people that had extras, so we got to go. So it was pretty awesome, but I was impressed by the team and their poise and a rough, rough first half, but they pulled it out in the end, so it was a great game. So congratulations to them.
Amy?
I would like to again thank Jennifer for the budget review process on Friday. I'd like to congratulate the National Merit Scholarship winners, or National Merit winners, I guess, again. Finalists, thank you. I just, I'm not going to go into detail like Lori did, but just advocate, advocate, advocate. I am on the School Foundation Committee, and I am meeting with Darren tomorrow. I am over, I'm taking over the grant process for them. I have no idea what I'm doing, so Darren's going to educate me on that tomorrow. They have two fundraisers every year. I don't remember the date. So just keep those in the back of your mind if anybody wants to race. I'm down. And then I just want to thank for the, thank everyone for the assessment presentation tonight. That was very valuable, and I hope to get more of that. On that note, I know I'm sitting next to Mr. Data, and we all know that I sometimes get frustrated because I feel like all we talk about is data. And so I just want to pose the question, is it worth us having someone talk to us about the other side of that? Where are we at with student mental health services? How many more students have used it this year? What do we have going on? What does that look like? Do we need to, is there areas we need to make improvements? So if, just putting that out there, if it's worth kind of having that side of it presented to us as well. Not necessarily a work session, but just as part of a board meeting. So, that's it.
Amy?
I just have two things that I was just taking through my head, like who do I need to go home and test to remind to go vote tomorrow, so you guys advocating for that. Just a gentle reminder to everybody, you know, COVID numbers or positivity rates going down, which is wonderful, but I think there's probably a generous number of people that are going to travel between now and the next time we get together. So just mask up, wash your hands, keep socially distanced, so we can continue to keep our kids and our safe.
Jim?
I'd also want to thank you to Jennifer for her little workshop that she had for three of us board members on Friday, Friday afternoon till 5:00, which was very generous of her. Also, I echo the update, I think not only this academic achievement that we had today, but maybe some updates spring, summer, just on the progress we've made with what was shared today. I appreciate all the things that were shared and the effort put into that report. And obviously, that's a huge passion of mine, and I appreciated the effort that was put into that. And I would also appreciate some student mental health that Amy brought up. I think that would be useful information for us about how we're helping our kids in that area. That's all I have.
I will also add to the, get out the vote. Certainly, it's an important measure for us. It is what we as a board have brought to the community to pass, and so we are anticipating that. And if you're at home listening and you have questions about that, you can find some good details on our website if you're interested, and certainly finding your polling places if that is also something you need to find. Reminder to the board, our next meeting, which is after spring break, it starts at 2:00 PM and will include some work session time with HYA. It's going to be a kind of marathon day for us there. And it is also, we picked a long day to do Picture Day. So we'll come in whatever attire you'd like to have. We're going to commemorate our kind of COVID-esque appearance and make sure that we at least mark that down for history through just the group photo at our next board meeting. And there is a closed session tonight before I go to Dr. Aesinger that we'll stick around for, but if you're in the public, there's no decision being made after the, this closed session. It's an internal personnel thing. So we will officially adjourn after that closed session, but we will not be broadcasting past Dr. Aesinger's report. So with that...
I'm going to go down my list, even though everybody said it. The first thing on my list was vote tomorrow. The other thing I was going to, I was going to bring to your attention is we recently got a letter from the CIML Conference, and they are proposing to leave the conference. The rules of the conference are they have to give us a year's notice. And so they mentioned in the letter that this should serve as that year's notice. And so that will, that will transpire in the future. I suppose there'll be a realignment of conferences, and there's a year to work on that. At least you know it's coming. The other thing I just mentioned quickly is that we've begun work on the Principal Search for Heritage. We've got some groups from putting together to do some focus groups again. For the most part, those are pretty well done. We hope to get some meetings with that group, with some of those people by the end of this week even, and keep that moving. We've advertised, we'll continue, we'll advertise more broadly even than we've already advertised. I think Jesse told me today, we've got 10 applicants already without advertising, without doing anything. But so we're hopeful we'll have a good, a good pool to draw from on there.
So I, I need a motion to hold a closed session as provided in I code section 21.51K of the Open Meetings Law to discuss information contained in records in the custody of a government body that are confidential pursuant to section 22.7, subsection 50 of the Open Records Law. So I need a motion.
Second.
Yes, and then a roll call vote, so.
Sorry.
Your fight. Would you like a copy of that motion?
Yes. And I'm, okay, we'll do the roll call. Director Weldon?
Yes.
Director Tally Rini?
Yes.
Director Klaus?
Yes.
Director Ford?
Yes.
Director Loestad?
Yes.
Director Bohannon?
Yes.
Director Johnson?
Yes.
All right. Need a two-minute recess before we start this, or are we good?
I need a, I did not.
Okay, we'll end broadcast.